Alright, good evening everybody. We're just waiting for everybody to join the call, but thanks for standing by. Okay. Just a few more joining us. Okay. And we'll go ahead and get started with the beginning of this. Item 1.1, Call to Order: The Governing Board of Trustees' Organizational Meeting 2020. I would like to call to order the December 16th, 2020 Governing Board of Trustees' Organizational Meeting at 4:48 PM. By law and board policy, I am notifying you that this meeting is being recorded. The Governor of California has declared a state of emergency to existing California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The Governor issued an executive order N2520 which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference and video calls while still satisfying state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the Delmore Union School District Governing Board of Trustees, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. To facilitate this process, this meeting of the Governing Board of Trustees has been made available on the district's website. Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding items on the agenda must go to the link provided at the online agenda. The link can be found on the front page of the agenda. Item 1.2 to be heard regarding a closed-session agenda item. 4.2 to be heard regarding an item not on the agenda. Item 5.7 to be heard regarding an item on the agenda. Complete and submit the online request to a Republican input form at the link provided. Once you submit the form, please click on the Raise Hand function in the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if calling in, dial *9 to raise your hand. This will let the moderator know that you have submitted a speaker form and would like to address the board. Please do not click the Raise Hand function option unless you plan to address the board and have completed the form. If you can't access the link, please email Megan Bennett at m-bennett@dmusd.org. Two N's, two T's. Item 1.2 is the oath of office ceremony for Lieutenant McClurg.
Yes, it is my honor to be able to swear in our two board members who were elected to serve for four more years on our school board. And we will begin with Erica Halpern. Congratulations Erica, and please, if you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Erica Halpern, do solemnly swear.
I, Erica Halpern, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations Erica Halpern, it's now official.
Thank you.
On behalf of the entire district, congratulations. And we are thrilled and excited and honored to have you as part of our governance team and this esteemed Board of Trustees, congratulations. And now, we will swear in Jiwa Maak, who also has successfully won election to our Board of Trustees. And if you, Jiwa, would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jiwa Maak, do solemnly swear.
I, Jiwa Maak, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations Jiwa Maak, yay, four years. And congratulations to you on a successful election to this. As I was saying earlier, esteemed Board of Trustees, these offices are very important, and from someone who works firsthand with our Board of Trustees, this election is important to our district. So congratulations to both Erica Halpern and Jiwa Maak. We look forward to the next four years of having you in your offices, congratulations.
Thank you Holly.
Thank you, and congratulations Jiwa.
Sure.
Okay, item 1.3 is election of the 2021 President of the Governing Board of Trustees. The board will select one of its members to serve as President the 2021 calendar year. So, is there a motion or discussion on that?
Scott's gone.
Huh.
Is he not here anymore?
Let's find Scott before we move on. Maybe there was an issue with connection, so let's wait, I'm glad you noticed that. We will work on it from this end.
I think I only slightly stumbled on my swearing in.
Mr. Wooden is having connectivity issues, so we're working on that with him right now.
I was a little worried Holly when you said four terms instead of four years.
Well, did I say terms?
Well, initially, and I think you pointed yourself, and I was like, wait, what did I sign up for?
A four-year term.
We're planning for 16 years here?
A four-year term. Okay, we're working with Mr. Wooden to get him connected, so. Hopefully that will happen momentarily.
And Judy String, we see your chat that you're going to speak in, you're all signed up in the public comment period, which will begin after the 5:45 restart of this meeting.
Hello?
I see Scott walking through a dark room, but he's back.
Yeah, I had bandwidth issues here. I'm going to turn the video off for a second and then get situated, but I'm back. I can hear you on audio.
Alright, great.
You're ghost hunting. You're showing ghost hunting.
Yeah. Okay, so we're on 1.3, Election of the President. Can discuss this or take a nomination?
I'll nominate Erica Halpern.
Thank you Doug.
I'll second that.
Alright guys, well, that's a motion and a second.
Want to do it again Erica?
Thank you. I think I have another year in me. Okay, is there any discussion?
I think Erica does a good job. So, I'm happy with her.
Just run good Zoom meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, when I got into this, I didn't even know about Zoom. Now I have all these Zoom skills, so it's been a year of development for me. Alright, well, let's call the vote then.
Are you a Zoomer?
A what?
A Zoomerang.
A Zoomerang? Yeah, I guess so, great. Alright, so thank you for your motion and a second, the roll call vote, Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Maak.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And I for me. Thank you guys, and just before we go on, I'm going to say that it's always such a pleasure to work with this board. It's just, sometimes feels unique in the context of, you know, the world we're in, to have a group of people who just don't always agree, we have different perspectives, but we're all dedicated to working together, and it is really an honor to be on this team with you. So, thank you for the vote of confidence, and I'm looking forward to better 2021. Okay, item 1.4 is election of the 2021 Clerk of the Governing Board of Trustees. The board will select one of its members to serve as Clerk for the 2021 calendar year. There a motion?
I'll nominate the newly-elected Jiwa Maak.
Thanks Doug. I don't mind doing it again, I'm getting pretty good at signing papers, so.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
I was going to jump in there, nothing personal Jiwa.
I was going to second myself, so it's okay.
Okay, second from Wooden. Okay, so, any discussion? Roll call vote, Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Maak.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
An aye for me, congratulations Jiwa.
Thank you.
And thank you. Alright, item 1.5 is selection of the Governing Board of Trustees' 2021 appointments. So, the Governing Board will determine appointments for the next calendar year, and the five items, I think, are listed. But, we will start with the Secretary to the Governing Board of Trustees, and we have traditionally had Holly McClurg in that spot. So let's just discuss each of these, and we can just do a vote for everything at the end. So, how do folks feel about continuing to have Holly as our superintendent as Secretary?
I'm fine with that, it's been historical, we've always done it that way, so.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, I'm just kind of curious, out of just curiosity, like, what is the role of the Secretary? That's, anyway, I'm just curious.
Holly, do you want to talk about that role?
Sure, it is what you rely on me to do to get all of this ready and up and running as far as meetings, all of the paperwork, all of the clerical pieces that go on and the operational parts of what a board has to do.
Okay, please do that Holly.
Thank you, obviously under the direction of the board.
Okay, for the North Coastal Consortium for Special Education, we need one representative. Who do we have in that spot now, is that you Jiwa? Are you in the?
I think the special education one, yeah, I think that's me, but I never actually attended a meeting because when they, the first one they scheduled, they hit right around COVID time, like when it started, so I never actually got to attend a meeting, so, but, you know, I'm happy to do it again.
Okay. Anybody else raising their hand for that, or that's good? Okay. And then, Representative to the North City West School Facilities Finance Authority, we know that's been Doug for quite a while.
I'm actually chairman of that.
Well, you've done a great job on that, yeah.
Yep, see Doug continue if he wants to. I assume he does.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then, for the DMSCF, should we continue to rotate responsibilities as we've been doing the last several years?
Yes, please.
I see nodding.
I like that.
It's been working since we all get to now attend the meeting and hear what's going on with the foundations, so I think it's good to split it.
Okay, great, and then the last position are two representatives to the Legislative Action Network, and I think that's Scott and Catherine right now, do I have that right?
Yes. I'd like to continue.
I would too.
Okay. Well, a whole lot of the same this year, okay. So, we have Holly McClurg as Secretary to the Governing Board of Trustees, we have Jiwa Maak as Representative to the North Coastal Consortium for Special Education, we have Doug as the Representative to North City West, we are rotating the liaison role for DMSCF, and Catherine and Scott as representatives to the Legislative Action Network. Is there a motion to approve the selected representatives?
I'll move to approve that, those representatives.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Maak.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Okay, an aye for me, the motion carries. Item 1.6 is adoption of dates, times, and locations of the 2021 Regular Board of Trustees' Meeting. Those were presented at the last meeting, is there any discussion on that, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve those dates.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Maak.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
An aye for me. Okay, we have to go through the motion to adjourn this meeting, and then call to order the Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting. Are you guys ready? Is there a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the organizational meeting.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Maak.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Aye for me. Item 1.8 is call to order the Governing Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting. I would like to call to order the December 16th, 2020 Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting at 5:04 PM. I will now take a roll call of members who are present at this meeting, Member Raffner.
Present.
Member Wooden.
Present.
Member Maak.
Present.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Present.
And I am here. Okay, item 1.1, Public Input Concerning Items on the Closed Session Agenda, and we have none. So, item 1.1 is adjournment to closed session, the Governing Board will adjourn it to closed session. The items to be discussed will be the conference with legal counsel pending litigation. The Zoom meeting will remain open, the board will convene and rejoin this open session when the closed session is adjourned at approximately 5:45 PM. Okay, I will see all of you in there.
Hello everybody, we're all just rejoining. Thank you for waiting. A moment. Okay. And we're all here, okay. So, we are at item 3.1, Call to Order: Reconvene in Open Session. Open session is reconvened at 5:56 PM. Prior to closed session, the Board held an organizational meeting, in which I was selected to be the Board President, and Joamak was selected to be the Board Clerk for the 2021 calendar year. On 3.2, there was reported action taken in closed session. There was no action taken. Item 3.3 is a Pledge of Allegiance. Holly, will you please let us in the remote Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three point four is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Mok.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion to approve the agenda has passed. Four point one correspondence, Dr. McClurg.
Good evening, President Halpern, members of the board and community. Thank, we, the superintendent's office has received the following correspondence in the previous month. We had several pieces of correspondence thanking the district for opening schools and many for mentioning that it is what was best for their children or children in general. One regarding diversity and inclusion, one from one regarding individual, excuse me, diversity and inclusion, D M U S D. One regarding D M U S D special education, one thanking the district for supporting teachers, and one thanking the district for the parent webinar. And that concludes the correspondence from the superintendent's office.
Okay, thank you. Item four point two is hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. We will now address the members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. And members of the public who would like to address the board regarding an item on the agenda and need assistance, please email Megan Bennett at m Bennett at D M U S D dot org. That's two N's, two T's. The board values high level of engagement and we welcome public input. Okay, so we have three speakers. And let's take Judy Strang, followed by Mary Ann Grossner. Go ahead, Judy.
Good evening. Oh, hello, Erica, how are you doing? This is Judy Strang with, this is Judy Strang with San Diego Alliance for Drug Free Youth. We just wanted to take this evening as an opportunity to thank all of the board members and to welcome back Erica and Jiwa. And we wanted you to know how much we've appreciated the quality of your work over the, this last year. Been a difficult time, I'm sure. But it has not escaped our notice here at San Diego Alliance and with our community partners and our parents that you have put the educational opportunities of our youth as a foremost priority, as well as balancing it against help needs. We want to let you know that the partnership we have with you regarding the Study Buddy program at five of your elementary schools matter a lot to us. And we're in the process of piloting a virtual Study Buddy program at Delmar Hills. And we'll go forward with that in the spring if the situation persists, which I'm sure it will. But we really look forward to returning back to the school site. There's a magic in the Study Buddy program I watched given in the pilot virtual program. And that magic occurs when teens give service and the elementary school students just thrive under their extra attention. So we thank you for this opportunity and welcome back to our returning trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Appreciate that. We have Mary Ann Grossner, followed by Dr. Burhan Muhammad Ali. So we can go ahead and bring them both into the call if they're available. Okay, Mary Ann, you're in the call, still muted. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members and Superintendent McClurg. In last month's November board meeting, a parent of a special needs student had made public comments concerning his family's experience with such.
Okay, unfortunately, we lost Mary Ann. She dropped off altogether. I don't even see her. I don't, I don't see her on the list at all now. So in the meantime, let's have. Wait a minute. Oh, she's, she's back in. So we can move her in. Okay. Okay, go ahead, Mary Ann.
Hi again. Anyway, so yeah, so Board President Halpern has told him that they would reach out to him, but to this date, no one from the district has reached out to him regarding his public comments that he made. And also, she told another speaker, Samuel Arias, that they would also reach out to him after he spoke out at two board meetings. And he told me that no one from the district contacted him back either. So I was wondering if the district is going to keep their word on that. And also, I wanted to make a short comment on a couple of your credit card charges for the month of December. I was curious to know if it was necessary to spend a hundred and thirty-five dollars worth of meeting supplies from a cookie company. I also wondered what kind of meeting supplies can be purchased from Bath &amp; Body for seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents? Since these were for a meeting, I am just wondering how many district employees were at this meeting and if they maintained social distancing, especially if they were eating cookies during this meeting? I think the public would be curious to know what the agenda for this meeting was also. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. Can we also take in to the call? Dr. Muhammad Ali? Is he's, I see that he's on, but listen, there he is. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'd like to thank the board and Superintendent McClerk for this opportunity to address the board. And I actually had the pleasure of addressing the board at the last meeting. And I had a couple of questions about the special education program at, in the school district. And unfortunately, nobody got back to me about, about the questions I had, although I was told somebody was getting, gonna get back to me. So I would like to address the same questions again to, to the board. And my questions were that with the COVID nineteen pandemic, the special needs program has, has taken quite, quite a hit with a lot of the special needs education activity not being provided, rightfully so, not being provided for by the school district. And, and all the, all the limitations imposed by the state on the special needs education programs. And now that the school district is open and, you know, schools are getting back, then my concerns were, what are some of the measures that the school district had intended to take to? To address the special needs areas of, of, of the student population? And especially with the, with the pandemic and what other programs were in mind? And also, if there were any opportunity to collaborate with other programs in, in the region, as, of the special needs programs in the region, such as the Poway School District and San Diego Dugido School District and multiple other school districts? To figure out what best practice scenarios might be to help out students in the special needs program who are affected by the pandemic? And I look forward to, I look forward to the correspondence from the board about these questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. McClurg, can we just be sure to follow up on that one? Okay. Okay, so that is the end of public comment on non-agenda items. Item five point one is the D M C T A report with Kevin Cunha, president. He's here. And Phoebe Catfield's behind him, so we can bring them both into the call. Hi, Kevin.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. McClurg and President Halpern, members of the board and cabinet. Thanks for having me on. Tonight, I don't have anything in particular to share, but I would definitely like to say congratulations to Erica and Jiwa for, and welcome back for another four years on the board. And congratulations, Erica, on being president once again. Pretty awesome. So another thing tonight, I guess I'd like to say before I go here is just, I was thinking about this before I came on. And as the president of this association, I gotta say, I could be more honored to represent such a hardworking group of individuals. The time that I spend working on their behalf, talking with the administration, has, has been fruitful and a learning experience for me. But on the other's part, seeing what the teachers do every day and how hard they're working and what they've been able to pull off in this extraordinary year, it's just been amazing. So to be able to represent them in this way has been an honor and I really appreciate that chance. And I appreciate the people I'm working with on the other side. I've learned a lot about what they do and had a chance to gain some perspective from both sides of the aisle here. And looking forward to seeing how we can maybe do things in two thousand and twenty-one as we put twenty twenty in the rearview mirrors. So happy holidays to everybody and have a very happy new year and we'll see you in the January board meeting. Take care.
Thank you, Kevin. Hi, Phoebe.
Hi.
Item five point two.
Good evening, yeah, good evening, President Halpern and members of the board and members of the cabinet. Thank you for having me. Happy holidays. I do have a few slides that I did send to Chris. I don't know if he wants to pull those up. Thank you. And I, yeah, we just wanted to start off by just giving an update of how D M S E F has, has been doing and to thank our incredible community. We've made, you know, some significant progress with being able to fundraise in such a challenging time. And I think he'll pull it up now, but it's just a summary of kind of where we are. We have been able to raise over a quarter of our, of our goal for this whole year, which is fantastic. So we're at twenty-five percent of our goal. Here we go. And we've raised three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which is fantastic. Thank you, guys. And of that three hundred and fifty-five thousand, I think it's great to note that fifty-two thousand of that and change has been employee matching dollars. So, you know, we're super grateful to all of the companies that are matching their employees' donations. We're so grateful to our community for reaching out to their employers to see if they will match. And it's, it's, you know, it's very, it's significant. It makes a difference for, for our foundation and for our whole community. And then to our sponsors as well, as you can see. We wanted to share some more pictures. I think you guys have seen some of these, but our STEAM Plus classes in action. You know, we've got launch and in-person, just enjoying their STEAM Plus classes so much and giving them that hands-on educational experience that they get in STEAM Plus, you know, if, even if it's online. So our STEAM Plus teachers have done an incredible job. So that, that brings us to our second slide, please. And so we want to just thank them. We know this, this holiday season, I hope all teachers are being thanked by all of our parents. And D M S E F wants to extend a huge thank you to, to all of our teachers, you know, all the staff of this whole district and to our STEAM Plus teachers too. We know this is not, you know, how STEAM Plus was supposed to be online, but they've all adjusted and worked so hard behind the scenes to make STEAM Plus come alive. So thank you. And then a big thank you to our room parents and our room parent liaisons right now have been working to make sure that even though, you know, so much is online, that, that our teachers are thanked at this holiday season. And I know the, the launch room parent liaisons have worked really hard to, to make that happen. And our board was able to, thanks to an incredible board member, get Starbucks donations for all of our STEAM Plus teachers. So those will be going out this week. So we just wanted to say a big thank you to Becky and to, and to Starbucks too. So we hope those treats are enjoyable for everybody and we thank everyone. We want everyone to have a good, safe and healthy holiday season. And we can't wait for two thousand and twenty-one and our, our Jogathons in the spring. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Always impressive to hear your report. Five point three is the board report of the PTA. And we have Gregory Reed to present a report regarding charity from the, from the PTA. And he's, I think he's gonna come into the call now. And go ahead, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, everything just flipped around. Thank you. Good evening to the governing board and Superintendent McClurg and everyone participating. I'm Gregory Reed. I'm the Sycamore Ridge PTA president. I thought for the end of the year and the holidays, we'd review some of the charitable efforts that our PTAs have been up to. And can you go to the next slide? There we go. Normally, we're focused on supporting student, staff and family as we focus on efforts at the schools and the community. COVID nineteen has introduced a lot of new challenges and how we can implement some of our efforts with charity. So I'm gonna kind of explore and go through the different schools and show some of the sampling of what's going on in the district and how we've adapted in these times. Next slide. Next slide? Oh, go back one. Sorry. There we go. Just a reminder that our PTAs are already charities. People give money to us to support the school and the community. So generally, we act as sort of a catalyst for supporting charities, either promoting particular ones that would be important to the community or making it easier to donate in particular to them. Next slide. And previous years, a lot of things were much more in person or involved putting bins out in front of our schools for Toys for Tots or for a canned food drive or things like that. And obviously, that's become more of a challenge this year, given all the restrictions on campuses. Next slide. All right, so for, I'm gonna start with Sycamore Ridge, just because that's my home school. Basically, this year, we designated Ronald McDonald House Charities and we've set up a program that anyone interested can follow a link and purchase food that is automatically donated directly to the charity. We thought this was easy and kept adults away from our campus when they didn't need to be there and also to reduce the amount of goods that kids or adults are bringing on campus and having to go through quarantine. So we're trying to do a hands-off approach at Sycamore this year. Next slide. Carmel Del Mar, excuse me. Carmel Del Mar typically has planned a canned food drive as well as collecting school supplies for distribution to an elementary school in the South Bay Union School District. The next slide. Delmar Heights and Delmar Hills jointly completed an amazing effort in November. They have student-written thank you notes and cards for essential workers. They have hundreds of cards and notes that were delivered to police, fire stations, post offices, grocery stores, restaurants, hospitals, et cetera. It was amazing. You can see some of it in the images, hopefully. Also, both schools have been collecting toiletries, toiletries for distribution to the Alpha Projects supporting homeless. Next slide. Okay, Ocean Air. Year-round, they work on Project Linus, which crafts homemade blankets for donation to children in need. In addition, they just held their Winter Wonderland Drive Through Food Drive, which looks amazing and tried to get as many photos in as they could and brought in over eight hundred cans of food. And finally, they held a jacket and blanket drive to also benefit the Alpha Project in San Diego. Next slide. And Sage Canyon held a drive for puzzles and games and brought in over two hundred and seventy-five that they would then donate to the Community Resource Center, which was overjoyed with the collection, a lot of entertainment involved. Next slide. And Troy Hills has an annual service slash charity project to collect and package two hundred and individual, two hundred and forty individual hygiene kits for the homeless youth. This year, instead of students packaging the collections at school, families package complete kits at home before delivering to the school and then onto the model school. Next slide. All right, so I tried to move quickly, but that's essentially some of the activities that your D M U S D PTAs have been up to, keeping busy not only at schools, but also trying to support the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. That's some great projects. Okay, we are at board member reports. So five point four. We will go in the same order. Member Raffner?
I serve as the chairperson for the North City West School Facilities Financing Authority. And we had a meeting where we talked about the status of the finances that relate to the Melrose in the North City West area. We did talk about more money coming into the districts for cost overruns. I don't know if you recall, but we were able to free up some money from North City West and that was being. And that was being paid to us, uh, I think in, in one big check and then three or four smaller checks. Uh, and we're back down to these, uh, smaller checks. And, uh, I'm happy to once again serve on the North City West School Facilities Financing Authority as its chairperson going forward. Again, I welcome Erica and Jiwa back to the board. And, uh, I, I've seen some other school boards in action and would put our board against any in, in the state, I think, as, uh, a well-working board, albeit we don't always agree, but we work for the benefit of kids and, and, uh, I'm happy to be part of that. So, uh, with that, I wish everybody a happy holiday, happy new year, as we gladly wave twenty twenty goodbye.
Thank you, Di. Uh, member Wooden?
I just want to, uh, welcome, uh, Erica and Jiwa back to the board again and, uh, glad to have you. Uh, don't have a whole lot to say, just say, uh, have a great, uh, holiday season and a holiday break here. And like, um, Doug says, I'd be glad to have twenty twenty over and back to hopefully a more normal twenty twenty-one, uh, as we, as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, um, member Mock.
Thank you. Um, I think the only thing this month, I, we, uh, had the annual conference, uh, CSBA conference that we normally would be all together at, uh, in person, um, which I, I went to, my first one was last year and I really enjoyed that time to be able to meet with everybody and kind of get to know you personally. Um, and unfortunately we're, it was all virtual this year. So I'm not sure how many of you attended, um, but I tried to sit in on some. Uh, and then, you know, I was at the Legal Symposium, did that last year as well. Um, it's, it's interesting to hear kind of the new legal issues that are happening in school districts. But, uh, I, I did really miss being in person with you all. Um, the opportunity to kind of talk to you and, and share your insights about what panels that you went to. Um, it's, it's a completely different experience just to watch it on the, on the camera and, or on the internet by myself. Um, and, uh, not have that interaction and, uh, so, but hopefully that'll, next year we'll be able to do that again and, uh, we can talk about Hamilton guy on, uh, you know, who was one of the, uh, one of the keynote guys. I mean, we can talk about him in person next year instead of just watching him by myself. But thank you very much. Uh, thank, I'm, I'm very glad to be here again. Um, so thank you all for, for the opportunity to be back here again. Thank you for all the supporters out there. I forgot to mention that last time. So I appreciate everybody's, uh, supporting me and, and supporting Erica as well. Um, and I'm very glad to be back and, uh, look forward to the next four years. Um, and happy holidays to everyone. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Member Fitzpatrick?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome back Erica and Jiwa. It's great to have you guys back. And congratulations. I know you guys campaigned hard and it was a lot of effort and I'm, I'm glad you guys are here for four more years, maybe four terms. Um, we'll see about that. But, um, speaking of four terms, I did attend our board, the Board Book Club that I'm a, a part of and, um, got to bid farewell or happy retirement to Beth Hergesheimer from the San Gito Board. And she actually was on for four terms. So that's, that's a, a good run for her. Um, so that was, that was one of the events that I, um, participated in. And it's always great, like I say every time, it's always great to collaborate with board members from around, um, the region and hear what's going on in their districts. Um, and on, um, my birthday, I have never seen Hamilton, but I got to see, like Jiwa mentioned, what's his name? Let's see, I wrote it down. Leslie Odom Jr. from Hamilton. He sang, um, a few songs on Zoom. So that was definitely a Zoom COVID highlight for twenty twenty for me.
He looked good, right?
Yeah, so he, he was, um, I think he was the final keynote speaker. And it really was a testament to, um, the arts and, and just, you know, uh, VAPA Visual and Performing Arts and how, you know, amazing supporting arts is for our kids. And, um, just hearing him, uh, I, I still have to watch Hamilton, but hearing him sing was great. Um, and I also got to attend, you know, some other, um, sessions. One was, um, out of San Bernardino City Unified School District regarding a bullying intervention system that they've set in place up there. That was, it was really great to hear all the different ways that districts are tackling social, emotional issues and, um, I would go on and on about that, but, but that was, that was a highlight for me. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you to our teachers, um, who've done such an amazing job this year so far. And I hope you all have a really, really great break and you get to just kick your feet up a little bit and just, you know, do something for yourselves and for, and with your families and everyone at the district too. Thank you for all your hard work and just making this year go. And, and it's, it's been, we're, we're going strong. It's, it's been a really good year so far. And I'm sure twenty twenty-one is gonna be so much, so even better. So, thank you everyone and, um, happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you. Um, so I also attended the CSBA conference online, although it seems like a long time ago already. Um, it's already been a long month. Um, and, uh, I missed the keynote there, but I did pop into the session, some of the sessions. It's actually one advantage, advantage of the virtual world is you can pop in and out of different sessions and, and more, um, discreetly than normal. Um, so there were a lot of interesting ones, but, you know, I mean, obviously, uh, across the state, a lot of talk about education equity and what can be done to ameliorate learning loss and, and just protect against inequities in, in education going forward and, and making sure we're reaching every kid. So that was a, a big focus, um, for a lot of the sessions. And, uh, I did also attend the, um, School Board Book Club. There hasn't been a lot of book discussion recently, but a lot of comparing notes across, across districts as far as how everybody's reopening and it's, it's a really great forum. Um, and Catherine and I are, you know, gonna be diligent about whatever one of us doesn't go, uh, we'll invite someone else to attend because it's just a nice chance to get to know, um, other school board members from our feeder districts and, uh, in San Gito, that all feed into San Gito, including San Gito. So, um, it's a, it's a great, um, great way to share our best practices through that forum. Uh, then I guess I just wanna say, um, goodbye twenty twenty. And I hope I think we're all looking forward to twenty twenty-one. Um, I really just want to offer my just deepest appreciation to all the people who are making all this happen. The teachers, the principals, the school site staff, our superintendent, the district office team and the learning coaches at home. I look at you Jiwa, who have, really, it's been a monumental effort. And, um, I'm so proud of our district and everything that we've been able to accomplish this year, uh, despite all odds. And it's because of this dedication of every single person, um, and to the parents, the, the flexibility that you've shown, your advocacy, um, and just making, um, us all part of a really incredible school community that, uh, remains thriving even during this time. And for those of you who send your kids to school in person, we truly appreciate your dedication to keeping your kids safe and, um, and following safety protocols outside of school. That's what's allowing us to continue to stay open, um, while school districts around us are, are closing, um, because of, um, contraction of COVID outside of school that people bring to school. Um, and so, uh, we appreciate all of your devotion to that effort. And, uh, finally, I mean, thank you to our students. I mean, they just never fail to impress with their adaptability and resilience and just bringing joy to every moment. Um, you know, it's, it's always just inspirational to see how these young people, uh, you know, rise to the occasion no matter where they are, um, whether it's through a computer or, uh, i- i- under a tent or, um, through flexible access or whatever the case may be, it's, um, you are our inspiration and why we do this. Thank you. Um, so, uh, happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And, um, with that, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Five point five, Dr. McClurg.
Good evening again, and I too will congratulate one more time Erica Halpern and Jiwa Mock for your four-year term. We look forward to working with you for these next four years along with the other, um, board members as well. We, I continue to participate in weekly meetings with the other superintendents in the county. The topic of conversation right now is about the vaccine. There's a lot of excitement around the vaccine and the fact that it looks as if educators are going to be in the second, um, priority group. So we're excited about that. And we have people in our midst here in our community that actually have been a big part of, um, these vaccines and the work behind the scenes and working for these companies that are responsible for it. So we have a lot to be grateful for on that front. So it's very exciting. It also, this month has also been full of other correspondence and meetings with our DM, DMSCEF. President Phoebe Catcel, they're doing a beautiful job, um, that board and the entire group of, uh, directors and representatives from each school. And they're doing wonderful work in the midst of a pandemic. We had this past week our first in a speaker series. And I just wanna thank Jenny Ha. You'll hear a little bit more about it later tonight, but Jenny Ha has done a beautiful job of orchestrating a speaker series for parents this year. We've already had two. And so, um, just fantastic, um, very exciting. And I also wanna say that one of the things I hear a lot, a, a question I hear frequently is, you know, what is, what's different about Del Mar? And there are a lot of things in, in any year, in any given time that, that are different about Del Mar. And right now, one of the things that's very different about Del Mar is, um, uh, i- is our, I will tell you, our, our staff is incredible. We love our children. They're at the heart of every center, uh, of every decision, at the center of everything we're doing. And our staff definitely shows that. I give huge kudos, um, and thank yous to our DMCTA leadership, Kevin Cunha and the entire team. Because in our district, it is important to everybody that we all are, this, this, this happiness factor is really interesting to me. Because in other places, there are a lot of unhappy people. It seems, it seems as if everybody's unhappy. The teachers aren't happy, the support staff's unhappy, the parents aren't happy, everybody's unhappy, nobody's. And here I will tell you that our team of teachers, support staff, everyone has worked together to make sure this is a place where the people are showing up. We've got, it's, it is hard. We're in a pandemic. There is no difference here than anywhere else in that, in that situation. But the difference is the people who are showing up for kids and showing up for each other and doing so much right every day. And I just truly appreciate from the bottom of my heart, people doing the right thing for children and for keeping children at the heart and for just making this in spite of this pandemic. This is a happy place and I just could not be prouder to call every one of them a colleague. So thank you to everybody. And in addition to that, we have had from the very beginning a board of trustees who has been very supportive. Your vision, your passion, your mission, every step of the way has helped us lead the way, guide every, every decision. These have been hard things. And we are in a really good place right now because we've had outstanding leadership on our board as well. So, so thank you all around. And, and again, our staff, I cannot sing their praises enough. It is one of the things, when people say what's different here, um, our staff truly is exceptional. So thank you everybody and have a happy holiday.
Thank you. All right, so, um, we are at item. Sorry, um, five point five, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. Uh, last call for public input speakers regarding items on the agenda and we're closing the public input link. Um, item five point seven is board approval, governing board of trustees minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, member Raffner? I see you mouthing aye, but I don't hear you.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. So the motion to approve the minutes is passed. Um, uh, item six point one through six point one for the consent agenda. Are there any questions on items on the consent agenda or any that need to be pulled off? Okay.
Remember the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. I had a question on, uh, the, 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 let's see. Uh, s- on, on six eleven, on six twelve, is, uh, Jason here or can someone answer on his behalf?
All right, can we get Jason in? I know he's in the meeting. Jason Romero?
Hi, oh, there he is. Hi, Jason.
Hi, thank you. I was waiting. I was hoping someone would bring me in. Thank you for bringing behind the scenes. I was kind of nervous for a second.
So I had a question on six eleven and six twelve, they're regarding the, uh, after-school program. Um, could you kind of just explain, uh, it, it looks like they're, they're, I, I believe they're, it looks like they say new hires. Um, but my, I believe that they're just kind of part of the restructuring that we had talked about previously. Um, and could you kind of clarify that a little bit more if, whether it's where hirings made new, whether it's, uh, um, the people that we've previously already had, uh, please clarify a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you Jiwa and I appreciate the opportunity for clarity. Um, in this process, you know, just to give a little background and history for, for people who may not have, uh, heard us in our past couple, uh, board meetings. Our, uh, after-school program has been a robust program that has been, uh, just cherished by the community over, you know, the past couple of decades. And really a program that, that has been valuable and in need. And a- at its height last year, uh, nearly thirteen hundred students, well over twelve hundred students participated. Uh, for obvious reasons, um, you know, being COVID and, uh, you know, the need for, for this service really dwindled this year. And we have, uh, over eighty-five percent not participating, uh, compared to last year. And our program went from, you know, uh, twelve to thirteen hundred, down to a hundred and seventy students this year. So when we have such a, a dramatic decrease in enrollment, we needed to restructure the program. So there were, uh, some, uh, individuals who, uh, no one was, um, that we're talking about today was, was let go of a position. They were, they were re, um, uh, repurposed and utilized in our program. And, uh, basically we had four assistant managers that became site team leads. Uh, so they were managers of a single school site, if you will. Uh, in the process of, of restructuring this program, there is still a need for, uh, supervisory support. So those four individuals have the opportunity to fill this, this new position. So it is a new position, but the position is in-house. So, uh, we will select from one of those four, uh, candidates. Uh, you know, we're gonna do a base on criteria that, that meets the needs of the program. Uh, so all of those four employees that were, uh, you know, sent to site, to be site team leads are eligible to apply for the position and will be filling the position from there. So it's not a new position, uh, where we'll be hiring somebody from outside of the district. It will be one of these four, um, peoples, uh, that were in the assistant manager role.
Thanks, Jason. So it sounds like to me that you're basically, it's still kind of a restructuring process. You're repurposing somebody. Um, and, and we're not bringing anybody else. It's just, these are cost-cutting measures. It, from what I can see in the summary is that it looks like we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars in this, in this move.
Right. And, and, you know, we don't feel that, uh, these restructuring, um, you know, measures that needed to take to, to ensure the program solvency will be ongoing. Uh, but we also don't think that next year it's gonna pop up to twelve hundred students again. I think that, you know, you know, listening to, to Holly and everyone speak today about, you know, the, the, uh, vaccine coming. I think, you know, we're all pretty excited about, you know, twenty twenty-one looking a little bit more like, you know, twenty nineteen and, and. Um, so we are excited about that. And, you know, our goal is to have the program be back to where it was. Um, and so none of these employees were let go. They're all employed in the district. And, you know, the, the new position, when we had four people, we had, you know, somebody who was like really in charge of marketing, uh, somebody who was really in charge of like employee management. We had somebody who was doing, uh, you know, uh, Justin can speak really well to this, but someone who was doing, uh, the, the, uh, lesson designs. You know, so each of these, you know, individuals had a specific role. The person that is gonna be handling, you know, this position is gonna have a little bit of all of those roles. Uh, so it is a new position in a sense that it's combining, you know, multiple positions. Uh, but yes, to answer your question, it is a cost-saving, uh, measure. Uh, and basically we're going down from four in that leadership role to, to one has a bigger, bigger role, if you will.
And I, I gotta assume that when, if we were to ramp up the program again, like there's a demand for it, then probably we will try to meet that demand with, with the positions as well in the future.
Absolutely, yeah. And so all of those employees, uh, they basically have guarantees that, that, uh, you know, you know, if their position is needed over the next thirty-nine months. It's a weird California labor law with public employees that it's thirty-nine months. But over the next thirty-nine months, there's not even an interview that need to have, needs to happen. As soon as, as soon as there's a need, they automatically get their position back.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason and Juwan, are there any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, member Raffner.
Aye.
Number Woodin.
Aye.
Number Mock.
Aye.
Number Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
An aye for me, the motion to approve the consent agenda has passed. Item seven point one is board approval adoption of Amplify Science curriculum. And Shelley Peterson is coming into the call, Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, to present on the program. And Sarah Raskin, Jessica Morales.
Hi. We're full of surprises tonight. And actually, Jessica and Sarah will be taking the lead on this presentation, but I'm on the panel just to answer any follow-up questions.
Thank you. All right. So, good evening, President Halpern, Board of Trustees, and Dr. McClurg. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Sarah and I will be providing the board an overview of the extensive pilot process for curriculum adoption as established by the California State Board of Education. A review of our DMUSD pilot process, as well as information from our summative evaluation of the Amplify Science curriculum. Next slide. So we wanted to take a moment to talk about the state adoption process. The California State Board of Education uses a very specific process for vetting and adding programs to the state-approved list within a content area. Districts adopt new programs at least within, once every eight years, it's on an eight-year cycle. And there's a comprehensive review process, which includes content and curriculum review by credentialed and highly qualified teachers. Experts with a doctoral degree in the subject area, parents, school board members. All in an effort to ensure that materials adequately cover the subject area, are based on current and confirmed research, and are in compliance with the California Education Code. Additionally, California Education Code requires that instructional materials adopted by a governing board are compliant with the Fair Education Act. The Fair Act ensures the respectful reference to persons from all backgrounds, inclusive of race or ethnicity, gender, religion, disability, nationality, or sexual orientation. Reviewers are required to go through all the curriculum at each grade level to ensure that this criteria is met. Next slide. So as you may remember from the last presentation that Sarah and I did, we shared that the pilot process that we used here in Del Mar includes four steps. And it's also informed by the California Next Generation Science Standards Toolkit for instructional materials evaluation. This provides direction for school, school districts on vetting, evaluating, and essentially recommending science curriculum for adoption. Next slide. We first started with our district lens, and we really only considered programs that aligned to District Design 2022, as well as those that are listed on the California State Board of Education approved programs list. Additionally, we considered programs that were research-based and incorporated really robust professional learning opportunities for our teachers. Next slide. We took the opportunity to prescreen different programs. We consulted with our science specialists and the science team from the County Office of Education. And from that work, we determined that Amplify Science was the program to pilot in Del Mar. Next slide. As we kind of shared last time, we provided an overview of the different components of the Amplify Science program. And they're listed here, I'm just going to go over them briefly. It is a K-eight science curriculum developed by UC Berkeley's Lawrence Hall of Science. It's important for us to have that K-six continuum. It also is a phenomena-based approach, and it is inquiry-driven. It blends hands-on investigations and literacy-rich activities and digital tools. And the instruction design really supports all, all learners in accessing the standards. It is a comprehensive curriculum taught by teachers in the classroom. And it's nicely supported, we've seen, by science specialists in our STEAM Plus program. And then, the program materials are available in Spanish as well. Next slide. As Sarah shared last time, we had a very extensive pilot, which was a wonderful opportunity to include a lot of participants. Our pilot included sixty-eight teachers, representing teachers from all eight schools. Our science specialists participated, our teachers in launch, as well as our Spanish immersion teachers. Next slide. And so tonight, it kind of brings us to the end of our pilot timeline. Our teachers have successfully completed one unit of Amplify Science. It's been a joy to get feedback and watch them teach that unit. And now Sarah's going to go ahead and present the information from our pilot evaluation. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Jessica. So with the understanding that no one single program is the panacea, but rather a set of tools from which our teachers will be able to facilitate instruction. We're going to take a look at the survey that was provided to both our teachers and our parents to be able to get, to gather feedback on the pilot. Next, next slide, please. By way of background, the purpose of the survey was to evaluate how well the program materials provide students access to the standards. A rubric for evaluating the quality of instructional materials, along with a corresponding survey, was shared with both our piloting teachers and our Del Mar Union School District parents to gather their feedback. And what you're looking at on this screen is the five questions that were asked on the survey. So for example, one of those questions was, how well did the unit materials help students build scientifically accurate understandings? Ninety-four percent of our parents, and ten percent, or excuse me, ninety-one percent of our teachers said that these materials met or exceeded our expectations in supporting students with building scientifically accurate understandings. Another such example, if we look at phenomena. How well did the unit materials anchor students in their understanding around phenomena? And support them and engage them in authentic and relevant learning. Ninety-seven percent of our parents and eighty-seven percent of our teachers said that these materials met or exceeded our, our expectations. Next slide, please. These quotes that you're seeing represent some of the anecdotal feedback that we received from our piloting teachers and parents. And I'll give you a minute just to read those. Thank you, next slide, please. One of the, the key focus areas of the program is the use of hands-on investigations and simulations that promote inquiry and critical thinking. And so what you're looking at in the upper left is a picture from Sage Canyon School, where one of our teachers was working with the fifth grade Patterns of Earth and Sky simulation. And the students are physically moving around, as you can see socially distanced, but moving around to be able to understand how patterns of earth and sky work and how the earth is always moving. And so you can see the students actually in action with that simulation. And in the lower right-hand corner, you see a hands-on activity where students are, are looking very carefully at a piece of phenomena and studying it a little bit more in detail. Next slide, please. So, as you can see from the survey data that was collected, our community, both parents and teachers, hold a favorable view of the program. And so as a final step of the evaluation process, the Instructional Services team met with a focus group of piloting teachers to learn more about the strengths of the Amplify Science program and the implementation needs, should the curriculum be, be approved for adoption. Next slide, please. We identified program strengths, and those are listed, as you can see on the left-hand side of the screen. Some of those were flexible and diverse materials, again, having very strong anchoring phenomenon that repeats so that students are able to build science habits. Additionally, the audio stories and articles that are available in a digital library to be able to support the students in really strengthening, deepening their understanding of the scientific principles they're learning. As well as students really being able to read, write, and argue like scientists. Some of the implementation needs and next steps for us will be able to maximize simulations and labs to reduce the redundancy in some of the lessons. To integrate between STEAM Plus science and the classroom instruction, and look for those opportunities to engage students in continuous learning around a one singular topic area. To develop a network of scientists and professionals to support classroom learning. And to develop a system for managing the abundant hands-on investigation materials. Next slide, please. As shared, a strength of the program includes leveled readers and the ample library of books and audiovisual supports that are available to assist students with understanding scientific principles and concepts, and gathering evidence to communicate their claims. Next slide, please. Hands-on learning, as was shared, has been integrated into every unit of Amplify Science. And each hands-on activity is supported through very clear instructions for the teacher and unit-specific kits. Each kit contains hands-on consumable and non-consumable materials and various print materials. Teachers are going to need the support with the most effective ways and best practices around managing these materials for both student access and encouraging their use throughout a, an inquiry-based activity. Next slide, please. So with that, we are recommending that the board adopt Amplify Science, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and Sarah, let me start with you with a question. And thank you for doing that robust evaluation with both the survey and then the focus groups. And you guys always run pilots, which I appreciate as a way to evaluate these programs. And, and you had really high approval, I guess, rates in the, in the survey that you did. I did receive an email from one teacher who was in the pilot, a second-grade teacher who had some frustrations with this being too kind of, like, written content-heavy and not enough hands-on. And then, some concerns about accessibility for kids with different reading levels. Could you just address some of those topics, or really, and just for full transparency, any other kind of concerns that you have? You mentioned some on your slide, but, and how will you address those as you, you know, assuming that you go forward with this curriculum?
Thank you, President Halpern, I'd be happy to do so. As it relates to looking at the program itself, it is very literacy-rich, and we see that as a benefit of the program. Because of the fact that language and developing language is really interwoven throughout all content areas and is very important to our standards K through six. So it's, it's, it is a very important piece of the program. With that, we see opportunities for students to be able to have access to the audio and visual supports. And one of the things that Amplify has done a very good job of is being able to have not only physical readers available for students at leveled, to their reading levels, but also being able to provide them with audio supports to be able to read through those leveled readers online. And have videos that support, for example, a modeled teacher actually reading through those books as well to support student engagement and understanding as well. So there's many different platforms that can be used. One of the things that we're definitely going to have to shore up is our professional learning to support teachers in accessing those materials, knowing how to find them. There is a wealth of information available and resources available to teachers. This also is inclusive of the hands-on materials. And so when we consider all that's there, our teachers received one three-hour professional learning session for their pilot unit, and it happened in August. So one of the things that we know is we're going to have to have ongoing professional learning and really support teachers on the front end and throughout program implementation with more professional learning that wasn't necessarily available to us on that front end, if that makes sense.
Thank you for, for explaining all that, and that's great context. And just, just a follow-up question, and I appreciate hearing about the need for more trainings, as you would really rule it out. But, and how are teachers involved, and how are STEAM science teachers involved in implementing the curriculum? You know, deciding, do they decide to kind of which parts to do, or how much to do, or how do you complement with the STEAM? How, how does it actually work as far as that goes, in a normal year at least?
Thank you, that's another great question, and it really is an opportunity to have our STEAM Plus science teachers and our classroom teachers work together. And they look at a unit, they decide what's the best way, if you will, to attack it that makes the most sense for student learning. That may look like looking at the overarching lessons without, within a unit. And the science specialist saying, gosh, this piece makes more sense for me to teach because it's very lab-heavy and material-heavy, and so bringing that into a lab where I can take this piece and really focus around that to be able to support student learning, whereas a classroom teacher would take more of the literacy components. Supporting students through the reading and the writing that supports the developmental understanding of the scientific principles would be more their role. So we, they, they work in tandem to be able to look at those units and decide what's the best way to approach it.
Erica, I can add a little bit to that. During our focus groups, we heard amazing examples of our science specialists supporting the instruction that the classroom teachers were utilizing through Amplify Science. They were planning extension activities, they have knowledge using the FOS kits that we have used currently and in the past to create even more hands-on experiences for our students. So we really feel like it's going to be a fantastic opportunity for us. Our classroom teachers will be really taking that ownership and teaching a comprehensive science program that is articulated kindergarten through sixth grade. And we have such an amazing resource in our science specialists. And our teachers gave them huge nods in our meetings to say, it's amazing to have the science specialists come in and suggest this is a way in which I'm going to support your learning. So, we see it as a great opportunity for us in, in our district.
For me, the, the question that raises in my head mind is, now that we're, if you're trying to implement something new, what is the reason why we're implementing something new? How was it done before, and what was, why, why the need for a change? If there's a change at all?
Our, our current science curriculum is very outdated. And Jessica talked about that state adoption process being every eight years. It is well beyond the eight years, and I would describe it as quite dry. All of the hands-on pieces that were taking place in our science labs and in some classrooms, that was all based on supplemental resources that teachers or our specialists had added to the science textbook to help the phenomena come alive. NGSS was adopted, I think, in two thousand sixteen, if I'm right, is that correct? In two thousand sixteen, so those NGSS standards have been around for a number of years. Because of what we were engaging in as a district at that time, all, we had Common Core and NGSS all come around at the same time. And so we made a conscious effort, I mean, a conscious decision to delay the onboarding of full NGSS implementation and an adoption because we knew teachers were really grappling with the Common Core, which serves as a foundation really for all of our curricular areas. And I might add that specifically in Common Core, it calls for reading and writing across all content areas. So as a requirement for programs to make the state board adopted list, it also has to meet that Common Core requirement of reading and writing across curricular areas. So that is one of the reasons, although, although that, that, that is one of the foundational pieces for why we are seeing much more reading and writing within science. And quite honestly, our science specialists were already doing that. If you were walking through a science lab, you would see them journaling. You would see our students researching in articles. You would see our students researching in articles. And so as Sarah described, it's going to be more of a balance. What do we need the lab for and what can take place in the classroom? And Amplify Science has just a plethora of materials and resources so that one can complement the other.
Can I just give you my, since I'm in this interesting position of being able to see this firsthand, since my son is in launch, and so all the launch teachers are using the Amplify program, I believe. And the STEAM science teacher was using something a little bit, was using a different program. I don't believe that he was using the Amplify. And what I will say is that a lot of what that, the email that we received earlier today from the teacher actually kind of rang true with me. The, I went through, went back to look at kind of the work that my son had done. And I know that I'm speaking only from a first-grader's launch perspective. I understand that. But a lot of the worksheets were very reading-heavy and intensive. And for a first grader, it may be very difficult. A lot of them were like three-fourths of the page were reading. And I'm not sure that a lot of the students in his class would have been able to, are at that point where they can actually read all that. And for me, there were other programs, like in the STEAM programs, where they were doing work that was a lot more hands-on, and frankly, the students enjoyed it a lot more. Like, the lesson that they had for Amplify was about sea turtles and just kind of like the protection of how the sea turtles get protected. And at a similar time, what they were doing in STEAM was a little bit different. But they were talking about like animal adaptations and stuff, and talking about like animal beaks and bird beaks. And so some bird beaks, they were using a straw that was pulled in half. And then another one, they would use a Dixie cup that was kind of wider. And that was very hands-on, and you could see what they could pick up. And so you could, I could very much see the contrast of like the Amplify program and the whatever was in the past and what they were doing. With the, they were just much more invested with the hands-on lesson. And, you know, I don't know if that's something that will come, show up more in the upper grades or in different times. But from what I kind of noticed personally, hands-on, it was, or directly, it was very much like a, very dry, I would say. The Amplify was pretty dry. Kids were not quite as engaged. And some of the, whereas the, with the STEAM teacher and the difference, they can watch a video, they can kind of see like what was their specific lesson. They're a little bit more engaged, excuse me, a little bit more engaged. And so that, so that what the woman, what the teacher spoke about in the email quite resonated with me. And actually, so then I started kind of asking around a little bit to other teachers that I know about. And I got about, I talked, or I had feedback from maybe about eight teachers or so. And it was generally kind of the same, same feedback that I received, generally. And I know that, you know, there was a survey that was done, and I'm not trying to speak that, you know, speak against the survey. It's just that the people that I spoke with were kind of saying the same things, that it was a little more dry, a little bit less hands-on. And again, you know, I don't know if this is a matter of the different grade levels, but I would be interested as to kind of what you guys saw and what you heard.
And, and what I would say is that as I have looked through and experienced the materials, every lesson has a hands-on component. And I think we also have to recognize that feedback from launch might feel a little bit different than feedback from in-person. And I don't know if Jessica, you want to speak to supplies distribution and that we're already on a refresh for supplies distribution and why it looks a little bit different between the hands-on approach, as you described, Jiwa, that's happening with the science specialist versus what a first-grade teacher might have chosen to utilize from the Amplify program.
Yeah, so I will say that as I participated in the focus group and spoke to those teachers, I actually got feedback that there were so much hands-on materials that it was going to be important to try to manage them effectively. We had teachers talking about how they actually build on each other and how you have to create pretty extensive kits. And in sharing with Shelley about the Amplify program and talking about it, I actually foresee the hands-on experimentation materials, the investigation materials, being a pretty significant cost for us because they will have to be re-upped and replenished. And we have decided to purchase the kits or go with the kits that they provided in the program. The teacher said that they had everything that they could possibly need in these kits. And those are, kits are being used in our in-person programs. In our launch programs, we have very standard supplies that the students are using. And the teachers and the science specialists, in an effort to not have parents running out and getting a lot of supplies on a weekly basis, are trying to stick to more basic supplies. We gave some basic supplies at the beginning of the year, and our launch teachers have really done an incredible job of sending home weekly or monthly supplies as needed to their families. Some of those include science supplies, so a teacher does have the ability to do that as well. Sarah and I just recently met with the launch science specialist. And right on January fourth, we have another science kit order that will be going out. And it will be a kindergarten through fifth-grade science supply kit that the students will use to continue doing hands-on experiments. So as Shelley shared, there are a lot of hands-on experiments if the teachers have access to them and they choose to teach those as part of their unit lessons. Are you sure?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I have several questions as well. So just going back to the eight-year cycle of adopting new programs. So does that mean we've got, we're, you know, we're considering adopting this program and then we would not consider another science program for another eight years? We're bound, like, for eight years to keep this program? Is that how that, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, because theoretically, yes. This is, as you saw in the agenda item summary, it's an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment. So that is quite significant, and why the length of the program?
But there, throughout these eight years, we are entitled to constant upgrades as they're being initiated by the implementers at UC Berkeley or whoever, whoever is working on this program. There's, they're not just giving us, you know, we're buying the program and then this is it. There's going to be updates throughout the eight years. Is that correct?
Absolutely, and as well as our teachers supplementing. And as Sarah shared, you know, no one program is a panacea. And as teachers work through it and go through programs, they might get to pulleys and levers and go, you know what, this falls a little bit shy. I'm going to supplement with these other resources that I know will make this a more robust experience. And that happens across all curricular areas. But the Amplify would really serve as our sequence, our scope, and our base program for science instruction.
Okay, so then, and I'm also happy to hear that it's Fair Education Act compliant. I'm sure that, that's, well, I'm not sure, but I'm imagining that that's different than the science curriculum that we have been using potentially. So, you know, that's great to hear that all those advances are taking place in education where, you know, sorry, curriculum is even being created with equity and diversity in mind. I'm sorry, you guys. So I'm wondering as well, what supports does the program offer teachers? Like, is there any kind of discussion forum for teachers that they can log on? Because is this program, has it been adopted by other, I'm sure other districts in the state? I'm sorry, just one second.
Do you want me to address that while we wait for?
Yes, yes. So I can address the first part of that. Actually, this program came highly recommended and was the decision for this as the pilot, was made in conjunction with San Diego County Office of Education and their science team, which we have worked very, very closely with throughout, not even throughout this process, but several years prior to this adoption process. And with what they knew about our district and with the couple of programs we looked at, this one really rose to the surface. Also, I'm not, I don't recall the second half of the question, Catherine, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah, I was a little noisy first. I'll tend to her in a minute, but no, I was just wondering if there's some kind of forum for teachers to go on to that this, that Amplify provides so that teachers can speak or, you know, post a question and there can be a discussion about that. Like, oh, hey, you know, lesson, whatever, how did it work for you? What worked for you? What didn't work for you? Does this program offer that for teachers?
I don't know if that's built within Amplify Science per se, but I know that there are resources forums, such as the one, what you're describing, Catherine. And it looks like Sarah would like to add something to that.
Sure, I would be happy to. Yes, Catherine, exactly the way you're describing it, I haven't necessarily seen. However, LA Unified is one of the larger districts that have recently adopted Amplify. And through that, there is a network of teachers connecting. And that, actually, that resource was provided to us through Amplify for our teachers to be able to lean into and to gain some insights on how well their pilot process worked and any questions that they had. So I'd have to assume certainly through the potential adoption process, we would be able to continue with that network and expand on what is there already as a resource.
Okay, great. Just a couple more questions. Sorry. So is, have we ever, when we're adopting a new science program or new, whatever the subject is, program, done like a tandem pilot where we, you know, there's, there's a couple or maybe even three different programs that we test out? Have we ever done that?
We have many years ago. However, what, some feedback we got and what we observed is that typically you will take a group of teachers and, let's say, thirty, fifteen would pilot one program, fifteen would pilot another program. And they have the experience they have with their program. And then they may switch, and then fifteen pilot the other half of the program. And then, you know, so each had experience with a couple of programs. In doing so, it limits the amount of time and the number of teachers that can actually be involved. Publishing companies will give you X many piloting opportunities. And they give it for you, give it to you for X amount of time. And it usually tends to be a pretty truncated amount of time. And we found that that didn't prove to be as robust a pilot experience as really vetting the programs ahead of time, saying, okay, based on this, what looks good with this? We did have a team two years ago, and our science specialists were part of that, that had the opportunity to look at what was available. So all of that conversation around pilot materials that were available at the time we started to explore the option, that was part of narrowing it down in addition to our collaboration with SDCOE to really try to dive deeply into a program. Yes, and any, just if I might add, any program is not, the program doesn't make the curriculum come alive. The curriculum is the curriculum, and it requires extensive professional learning and support for teachers so that they can really dive into that curriculum and bring it to life. And, you know, we're excited about those opportunities that.
Let's take the time as you become familiar with the lessons. My, my last question is, how does this program branch out into other subject areas so that you're able to, you know, connect this science, Amplify Science lesson with maybe a history lesson or an art lesson or a math lesson? Is there that kind of ability to, you know, interweave the subjects?
Sarah, Jessica, would you like to address that?
Yeah, in all of the lessons, and actually as the NGSS standards are written, there are intentional connections, cross-cutting concepts, cause and effect. If you look at the Amplify chapters and you go through the investigations, they're going to have related English-language arts standards that the teachers can connect. A good example of this is that in sixth grade, our students are writing argument papers. And so when they are doing investigations, they are creating arguments such as a scientist would. And it really emphasizes that in science, scientists spend an incredible amount of time reading and researching and applying that knowledge and learning from the historical perspective of science. It is an essential part of this program, and it is a shift for us. You know, science does have that hands-on component, and we can see that this program has a hands-on component. It also has an incredibly rich literacy component, and that's a big thing that we're going to have to take on as a district. But all of the investigations actually have them pretend that they are a scientist looking at a phenomenon or trying to solve a real-world problem through that science concept that they are teaching. So the teachers have a lot of opportunities for cross-curricular lesson design.
That's the words I was looking for, cross-curricular lesson design. Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a few questions. Actually, the way Catherine phrased that question, the way Shelley had answered it, is how a scientist would actually design the curriculum. It's you do a pilot, several pilots, and then you flip the teachers and do another one and have it all well-controlled. I understand you can't do that with this, but my question is more on the earlier stage. I know there's limited number of programs that you're able to do based on what the state of California approves. What ones did you look at and why do we choose Amplify Science in order to be able to pilot? So Shelley, you said you had some earlier, where the science teachers had looked at the different curricula that you had in San Diego County Office also. So if you can walk me through all the programs that we had access to and what were the pluses and minuses for them and why we chose Amplify Science to meet our needs?
And I'm going to let Sarah address this. Sarah did some work very early on with our science specialists and with the county. So Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Member Woodin. So back in about two thousand eighteen, roughly, two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, this process began. And Jessica touched upon that in the presentation in regards to initially the STEAM plus team going down with District Administrator to the San Diego County Office of Ed and looking at the various programs that were available. It was decided at that specific time, in two thousand eighteen, the list of approved opportunities and adoption materials was just posted by the California Department of Ed. And at that time, the STEAM plus team felt it was really too early to adopt. We needed to kind of see what was out there, get some, maybe testimonials from other places and other districts, and really maybe get some direction from the San Diego County Office of Ed. So given yet another year now, in relationship to working with the San Diego County Office of Ed, two of the programs that came very highly recommended in regards to specifically the vision for Delmar Union School District, making thinking visible, ensuring that our DD two thousand twenty-two principals were able to come alive in a program, for example. Some of the members of the science team from the San Diego County Office of Ed were working very intimately with our science specialists and our classroom teachers. very intimately with our science specialists and our classroom teachers on instructing through NGSS concepts and principles, and they understood our district. And so through that lens, they suggested TCI and Amplify as two potential programs that really match and align well with our values as a district, our needs of our students. And through vetting both of those and looking at those curriculums very closely, the reason we leaned towards Amplify was because of its strength in supporting students with making thinking visible and what that would actually look like in a classroom and how teachers could have supports for that work, which really extends our work with Harvard and the immense amount of work that we've been putting into cultures of thinking within our district. It also was supported by a, a very clear focus on phenomena-based inquiry learning. And so we looked at an opportunity for students to really think like scientists by exploring, figuring out some aspects of, of, of a learning. For example, if I look at first grade and we talk about science of sound, students might begin by watching a video of a singer shattering glass by her voice. And at that point, really breaking down what happened, how did that glass shatter through someone's voice? And, you know, backing it up to understand more about vibration, doing little experiments and then applying it back to that singer again and continuing to come back to that cycle. Amplify had very rich resources, whereas our other curriculum we were looking at just didn't quite support with the same depth of what we would expect in our programs here in that same way. So that's why we lean towards Amplify. Jessica, is there anything else to add to that?
One of the things that we focused on with the San Diego County Office was also, when we explored TCI, it was a much more traditional program is what was shared. It was something that we could look at. It has textbooks that, that didn't, didn't really have the students really explore the phenomena first. It was more teaching the concept, the scientific concept. And we know from NGSS that our students need to make sense and they bring with them a lot of science understanding by having these explorations and building upon those understandings. TCI provided a lot more of that information upfront, and so it wasn't as good of a fit for our district. We also, when we talked to the San Diego County Office of Ed team, they knew our emphasis on design thinking. And so if you look at the Amplify pro- program, there are opportunities for students to use elements of the design thinking process. They get to build and iterate and test and get feedback, and so that was another recommendation of why that was a match for us.
One of the other programs that has been suggested was TWIG Science. And we, the San Diego County Office of Ed did not recommend that, and at the time we started this process, it wasn't on the state adoption list because it didn't meet their criteria. And so they, you know, typically what the state will do if a publisher comes and says, you know, we'd like this to be on your approved list, that the material, the curriculum goes through that extensive review that Jessica described, and basically the state will say, you have deficiencies in these areas according to our criteria. And the publisher has to take it back and then try to shore it up, and they can bring it back for consideration. And so such was the case with TWIG Science, and I, I think it's just recently been added to the state adoption list as an option.
And how, how many different programs were on the approved list?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
I was just curious. So how many, between TCI and Amplify, I guess the two programs you guys mostly considered, where are they being implemented in other districts? Who, who's implementing each of those? And you said, you mentioned about, I guess, LA County was the largest for Amplify. What about TCI? Is it being utilized any, anywhere? And what are those districts saying about that program?
No, I don't have very specific information around that, Member Woodin. What I do know is that in our local area, TCI has not been adopted anywhere in our most local region. LA Unified would be a very big example of one in which has adopted Amplify, but many districts, many districts throughout the state have adopted Amplify.
And, and so in our county, who's adopted Amplify so far? Anybody? No, so are we gonna be the first one to, to, to do a, to adopt a science curriculum then in the county?
No, well, actually, we could identify for you if anyone else is in the adoption process of Amplify. I think I remember the rep sharing that another district was in the process, but I don't know if they've moved towards the official adoption. I know many districts have decided to kind of halt projects they had or haven't finished their adoption, so we can find that information for you. The closest district I know that uses TCI Science, at least at some of their middle school levels, although it has not been consistent, as I can share for my own children who attend Powell Unified. My experience is that they use some of it, but some of other resources.
So we're the first in the, in the county to adopt a next-generation science-based curricula, is what I'm hearing?
I believe that the majority of districts have, that, that is feedback we get from the county that our district has, has been moving along, even though we have felt we have moved along quite slowly because NGSS has been around for quite some time. But it, it is, I do believe it is because of the, the absolute depth of Common Core State Standards and that happening at the same time as NGSS and our teachers really working to get their footing there. And NGSS is, is deep and challenging and an entirely different way of teaching science. So I would believe that, what, what I believe to be true based on conversations with my counterparts, is that the standards were adopted by districts and they used those standards to move forward, but not necessarily a complementary curriculum, very similar to what we've done up to now is adopted the NGSS standards, but used our existing FOS kits or supplemental resources to ensure that we were teaching to the standards.
So, my next question is, so on the, I know on the diverse learning, and that was one of the lowest, I think it's only if you go back to your, to the survey, only eighty percent of the teachers said that it was working for maybe ESL students or diverse learning students, and that kind of goes along with what I think Jiwa and Erica were talking about, that letter from the one teacher. Can you go into a little bit more about that as to how we can get students that may not be, it, 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 it sounds like it is very read-intensive, you know, very literary-intensive program, and that's fine with me because as a scientist, I know you need to read, you read a lot, so you have to be able to, 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 to go through that. But can you help me with how, say, special ed students, English as a second language students, and those, those students that may not be as fluent in English can work with this curriculum?
Sarah, I, I think you spoke to the variety of resources and auditory. Can you review that again and share how that can work as in complement to the, the printed resources?
Yes, absolutely. And also, just to touch on that survey, it's important to note that that was meet or exceed. So eighty percent were saying that the materials that are there really meet or exceeds the expectations of teachers in that particular area. So we look at what's available. We know that there are level readers that are able to support students in meeting their needs at their particular literacy level within a grade level scope. In addition to that, the audio supports, so the ability to be able to have the students listen to a story at the same time as it's being read to them, and so they can visually hold the book and at the same time here have the auditory support. That very much supports English language learners. It supports students perhaps where the reading is getting in the way, but the auditory processing is, is a strength of the student to be able to support their literacy development. Also, again, there are modeled examples of teachers reading books aloud to students, so they essentially read and they're posted to a YouTube-like link that's supported with an Amplify, that's like a YouTube-type link that allows a teacher to be doing a read-aloud for students. And I've received quite a lot of feedback that students really enjoyed those, going to that library and accessing them over and over and hearing that model book being read to them. And within every single unit, there are multiple leveled readers that are available, multiple audio supports and multiple read-alouds available as well.
So some of this might be more limited in, say, the launch program then, because they don't, they don't have, I mean, the physical books in their hands, I mean, they'd have to go onto, you know, an ebook.
Correct.
So
That was a limiting factor just in general when we think about it, because most of, in, in most cases, you're correct, everything in the access was digital, so it was through an E, E-type reader system or situation. What Amplify did do is pivot very quickly this year, not just for the support of our program, but with the understanding that to enhance the, the depth of their program, they created home, home access units that were remotely available to assist teachers and students. So all the simulations online, for example, were available almost in like a video gaming format. They added apps for students to be able to have more physical tangible ways of looking at the different phenomena through digital resources. So there was a, a student app, that system that was created in addition to supports for teachers.
Okay. And then finally, you said, I know one of the things that you were happy about was the Spanish piece, because we do have the, the Spanish immersion program. I know that changes as you, the amount that you're doing in English and Spanish changes as you go through from K through sixth grade. Can you kind of take us through a little bit about how Spanish resources and how that's gonna integrate in the program?
Yes, and so as far as, in any program that we look at, while the Spanish resources are there, they're very vocabulary-heavy and vocabulary-rich, and so it's going to take the expertise of our teachers, and Shelley spoke to that a little bit, a few, a few minutes ago, in regards to their adaptability to be able to look at the needs of their students and really take that curriculum and mold it to meet the needs of the students. It's going to take their hands-on with that process, because, for example, some of the readers, although it may be kindergarten, unit one, within the scope, if you will, of the science curriculum, it may be that the literacy skills are not yet there for the students. So the teachers are gonna have to scaffold that, that learning and that literacy to support the students. But the liter- the Spanish scope, K through six, is what we're actually looking at right now, and part of my work as well is to work with our Spanish immersion teachers and look at how we are looking at, to start, literacy, and how that scope builds, for example, just right now at kindergarten, throughout the course of a year. And then with that, how that translates to giving children the skills that they need to support their access to the content. So a lot of this is going to relate, rely on the teachers being able to take the physical materials that are available and then looking at the literacy skills and the needs of the students and bridging that, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
And, and Scott, what will also happen is, is the, as the percentage of English increases as we move on to ninety-ten, ninety-ten, eighty-twenty, that twenty percent, very likely, a portion of that will be used to provide that supporting vocabulary, so that when students encounter that work in Spanish, they'll be able to make some connections. And then as we move on up through the grade levels, because the, the Spanish is a complement to the English program and they work in tandem, we'll be able to transition to, at the appropriate time, to materials in English for those students.
And did the TCI program have Spanish module, or was that a liability for that, the, the other program that you were looking at?
You know, not, I, I, I can't answer that with certainty. It was something that, as we were considering this adoption process, Spanish really wasn't at the forefront of our thinking, and when we realized, oh, holy cow, Amplify does have Spanish materials, it was another feather in Amplify's cap as we were evaluating materials and the fit for our district. So I don't know that we got that far down the road with TCI to see, well, do they have a Spanish program? What I do know is having the Spanish component is really, really valuable, but we would never, and I know you know this, we would, we wouldn't adopt a program just because it had Spanish. We would adopt the highest-quality program and then support our students learning Spanish with resources if a Spanish complement wasn't available.
Thank you. I think that's it.
I just have a couple of things to say. Hello, everybody. First of all, Scott brought up an interesting point, and it's something that I feel strongly about, and that is that the fact that perhaps not as many districts have adopted programs such as this is the reason that I think Delmar should adopt a program such as this, because we've always been on the forefront. And frankly, I, I think if, if the reviews of this program were less than ninety percent by both teachers and parents, I would be a little bit more skeptical, but this program has received rave reviews from those that have used it over the years. And so I feel strongly about the vetting that was done prior to implementing it, the actual rollout of the, the manner by which this program was initiated initially, and, and therefore, for that reason, I would move approval and adoption of the Amplified Science curriculum.
Thank you, Doug. Are there more questions, or would someone like to make a second?
I have a couple more questions, that's okay.
Yeah.
So is, I know you kind of talked about this a little bit in the, in the beginning part, but is there a reason why we, we have to pick something at, at this moment in time? Like, some of the piloting was done in, in launch, and I don't know that that, like you were kind of talking about, that may not give you an exact experience of, of, of in person, which typically that's where it would be done. And so is there a reason that we, that this needs to be adopted now? Can this be something that is piloted again in the future, or is that like, kind of like a complete no-go from the publisher, like they're not gonna give us another second try? Or, you know, is, could you explain a little bit?
I, I will, I really just, first of all, want to, we are very appreciative to, we're not beholden to them, but we are very appreciative of Amplify Science, their representative and him working with corporate and being very, very flexible with the amount of resources we were able to acquire and the number of teachers we were able to include in this pilot. That's not typical, that a publisher makes that, that number of resources available to us. So I will, that at the outset. I will say, what we have heard consistently from teachers is, we need science materials. We don't have the materials we need to teach science. And so that has really moved us forward in researching and finding programs that were research-based so that we can get materials in the hands of teachers. We've said, science cannot live in the lab alone. Science is, science content and concepts are not a once-a-week curricular area, that it, it doesn't do it justice. And on the same, so if we believe that to be true, then we must also believe that our classroom teachers need really robust, rich materials so that they can also teach science in their classrooms to their students. I'm not saying that science wasn't occurring before, but I am saying that there was not an articulated program, and there isn't an articulated program, kindergarten through sixth grade, for our classroom teachers to use. So that's the reason that we felt we've, NGSS has been on our radar for many years. And so while this is the first time we're bringing it to you, we've been talking about science. Our teachers have attended workshops put on through San Diego County Office of Ed. We've had science lead teachers at all different grade levels to work and bring NGSS into our classrooms. So it is in To work and bring NGSS into our classrooms, so it isn't a um. It it's not really um something that was, okay, let's do it now, this has been an ongoing conversation for many, many years. In our district and um I think the time is right to provide resources for our teachers. I do not feel like we're making a rush decision, um we've had, uh Sarah has spent a great deal of time. With science, not just this year, but in her role as a design engineer as well and working with our science specialists. As has Jessica in her work um with our STEAM plus specialist. And so um I feel very confident that the time is right to adopt a curriculum, it and that doesn't mean. That come January fourth, we say, okay, go, everybody, start with the first unit and um don't look back. It does mean that we get the materials and we begin that process. My fear is that with a delay in moving forward to adopt a program and we wait till fall twenty twenty one. We go through this process again, we won't have science in our classrooms with an articulated program until fall twenty twenty two. Because to start the process over again and um. And go through it again, we s- we certainly can, but we are delaying. Quality science instruction in every classroom in an articulated manner for our students and that concerns me.
And I too have heard repeatedly over the last two years as I've done um focused groups um with with each school site. And um repeatedly, the teachers say, we need science, we need science, we need science. And they couple that with, we know there are other things and we need science. And this is, I mean, having seen, ha- haven't seen, ha- having seen many pilots over many years. This has been a really comprehensive pilot, I huge, you know, I give a huge kudos to our instructional services team. And everybody involved in the pilot because it was very exhaustive, way larger than any other pilot I've seen. Which is great, and I do think it's important that we listen to the ninety plus percent of the teachers. Who absolutely um give this a hu- gives this very high marks, I've only heard. Praise for Amplify Science from all of our teachers that have talked to me, so um so I I think it's uh it's an outstanding curriculum. And one of the things, getting back to the question Scott that you brought up about, how does it address the needs of various kids, I think one of the ch- things that is so powerful about Amplify. Is that it is so experiential and that actually can be, that's a new, you know, the this whole approach to phenomena is different for our teachers. In a lot of ways and they do need support with that, I think that's a gr- very good point that's been brought up and it's something that's just powerful about science. And if we have a gap in our program, I would say that's that's part of it that we need to address and there will continue to be a gap if we don't adopt a science curriculum, so. I do have concerns if we don't adopt because we do absolutely need one, it's what our teachers have been asking for and I know it's what they would say they want you to do. So I just want to make sure that we understand that, you know, as a whole, our teachers are very, very um favorable of this curriculum.
I mean, I do follow up with you, I think what you're saying, uh uh you and Shelley are sh- saying. Is that by adopting it now, you're actually able to start getting the resources in uh into the schools in this calendar year and then getting it to uh with all of the uh. Uh professional development that you're gonna need for the summer, you're ready to go uh in the coming fall with a full blown program. And so, but you'll be able to get bits and pieces into it this year and seeing what's working, what's not working. Where where people need more development, more training uh and those pieces, so so some of the concerns that we heard earlier about uh. The literacy and how do we get the students to be able to uh if they can't read very well, but those types of things.
But don't, let's not take a grass is greener approach to this thing, uh you know, let's, we we know what we got here, we need it, they like it. Let's move approval.
Uh so I would, I I'll offer a second and I just, you know, of course, I think that, you know, you guys. You went to the county office bed and they they offered you, you know, a few different options and you and this one has stood out and. Um I think, you know, coming from UC Berkeley, I think that's that's a pretty good foundation right there for for science. Um and I think that as with any new adoption of any any program or, you know, any. Idea that it's just gonna take time and, you know, our excellent teaching staff and support staff are gonna make this their own. And that does take time and so um, you know, I I just also. And I know this will happen, but want to make sure that our teachers are getting as much um support and and professional development along the way. Um to make it the best for our students, so if I do, I offer my second and this is exciting to have a new science curriculum, so. If we approve it. I offer my second.
Okay, um thank you, and and I would say I think this has been um a a robust discussion and um a very intensive pilot, I feel like. We have um gotten a lot of our questions answered here and it sounds like there are some noted areas for. Uh improvement or implementation or, you know, in- integration, both with STEAM and also just, you know, making sure we have all the adaptations in place so that everybody, every kid can access it and um. And um that there's still a road to travel to finish getting it all the way to where it's, you know, Del Mar, D N O S D worthy, but um. To me, I I I'm fine with it too, um uh and we can take a vote, but are there any other uh questions we have motion on a second?
Hey, look, I I'll just say, I'm 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 fine with it, I know that I sound like the one that's saying like, no, let's not do this. Um I I what I I I'm fine, I what I'll just say is that like, it does sound like something that does require professional development, it does require something that's working out the keys. Um and and uh eh one thing that that Shelley said that earlier, that this is kind of like the backbone, you kind of do this. And then you kind of have supplement, you can kind of add things that you were kind of doing previously um and still work on it, and so. I- it it sounds like there is, there are spaces where it's, it's not like, maybe I maybe I'm incorrect, Shelley, but it it not like this is like the only thing, you're gonna Amplify Science and then that's it and and. But it's more like the teachers can still work with the, eh there's still flexibility in in it to a certain extent.
Um to a certain extent, when we adopt a program and it's the district adopted curriculum. Um what we really eh work hard through the professional learning with any new curriculum is that we get teachers into the curriculum. Because otherwise, um it's easy to draw from what we know. And then um what what happens is that you end up with a very disjointed. Um unarticulated approach to um science instruction K six. So as we begin our professional learning, we do ask that teachers dive in, try it on, what's working, what's not working? I'll give you an example with investigations, we know that there are parts of investigations, our adopted sci- uh mathematics curriculum that are very weak. Uh and so we know at which grade levels those pieces are and teachers supplement with that and we go in search of units to supplement a particular. Um unit or chapter or concept, that would hold true for Amplify, but it would be our adopted science curriculum and we. We would support any areas where we found that it it falls short or that it seems to be a little bit deficient.
Shelley, can I ask a question real quick regarding that, is there a way that? When we discover deficiencies in programs, we can notify these publishers and do they ever make adjustments and? You know, beef up what we need?
Yes, they do because they want to sell more product, right, and so if they have. A a wonderful district like Del Mar giving them feedback and in fact, the representative already asked for feedback from us. Um what did your teacher say, what did your parents say, because they know that if they shore up those pieces. Um that we're saying, you know, we have a question about this or we could use a little bit more of that. That makes their their product and their curriculum that more um attractive to other districts who are looking to adopt.
Okay, um I think we're ready for a vote on this one, we have a motion in a second, um let's do a roll call vote, member Raffner?
Aye.
Number Wooden?
Just wanna say thank you, uh Shelley, for all the work in here, I'll I'll vote aye.
Number Mark?
I I just voted aye, I just, you know, eh eh thank you all, it's not, I wasn't, I hope that it didn't sound like I was pressuring you all too much and. Uh but I just, you know, I'm trying to make sure the programs are the best for for our kids.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Okay, an aye for me, I appreciate the um discussion and engagement from everybody, um that's what we're supposed to be doing and. I think we did it here today, so um let's continue the dialogue and make sure that this um uh is implemented uh well and thoroughly. So the motion to adopt Amplify Science curriculum has passed. Eight point one is board recommendation to consider nominations for the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. Um one observation, if I recall correctly about this, is last year we ended up with two candidates and then neither won. I'm not sure if I have that correct, but that was my recollection, and so um we might consider um choosing, you know, if somebody wants to run for this. Choosing, you know, one candidate and then trying to maybe throw a weight behind that person and um and get um. Get uh somebody from Del Mar onto this, we, there is somebody from um Swanah Beach, Debra Shade is actually the director for our region. Um and um and then there are, I think there is, we've. That may be all from the feeder Encinita Smartless Stretch, so um that's it from our feeder districts in San in San Diego, so. Um we um have the ability to nominate um, you know, one or or more uh board members for this um. This position. I think I think.
I'm still interested in the position, I didn't win last year, but. I'll I'll try again.
Okay, um so go ahead, Scott.
I I was just saying, uh I am fine with uh what happened, I do, I wanted to do it last.
Yeah, I'm like, I just wanna do it, I don't like losing either. I'm like, but but yeah, I do agree with the Eric, I might, I don't know, it it eh I don't know if we throw way behind one person, would it be better, I don't, eh that might be the case. So.
We we can do, we can do both and 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 try again, um it's it's really, whatever you guys want to do.
I I'd like to do it. I'll put it that way.
Let's keep trying, Jiwa.
All right, let's do it. I'm not afraid to go over two. I'll think, we're, I'm going, it's gonna be uh one for two, that's what it's gonna be, we're both gonna make it this time, Catherine.
Yes.
We have to do some lobbying this year to get this, get this.
That's right, we just need to, yeah, we need to approach it differently.
Okay, um so, um we need a motion to um. Sorry, where did I go, okay. Yeah, uh motion to um nominate Catherine and Jiwa for the California School Boards. Uh Association Delegate Assembly, sorry?
Isn't it just a nomination? I don't think we need a motion, I nominate Catherine and Jiwa.
It says action.
Yeah, we're taking action, I nominate Catherine and Jiwa.
Action.
Yeah, we're taking action, I nominate Catherine and Jiwa.
I'll second that.
Okay, Holly, my board instructor, my instructor said that we need a motion in a second, but is that, I mean, here with.
I don't think it hurts to vote on it, so I would go ahead and vote.
No, no, we're gonna vote, but it's a semantic.
Sorry.
I'm making a nomination, Scott's second, all in favor. We're making a motion.
Okay, you're making a motion um to to nominate Catherine and Jiwa, is that right?
No, we're actually nominating them, we're not making a motion to nominate, so it's semantical, but go ahead.
All right, so we're nominating Catherine and Jiwa for uh the CSBA Delegate Assembly, is and Scott is second, is that correct, Scott? Okay, roll call vote, member Raffner?
Aye.
Number Wooden? I couldn't hear you, so you have to do it again.
All right, aye.
Uh member Mark?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Okay, and aye for me, okay, good luck, guys, we're behind you. I actually really appreciate you being willing to do it, I think that there is a lot that we can, we can bring to CSBA um from Del Mar, um and. There's a quite a bit of loving fruit as far as the um from the programming, so um I'd love to see you guys involved, so, thank you. Okay, eight point two is board report superintendent update, the twenty 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 one school year, Dr. McClurg.
Good evening again, and I'll wait until the right presentation gets up tonight, um along with me are Shelley Peterson, our assistant superintendent of instructional services will be there. As well, Jenny Ha, our director of student services will also be here. And tonight I'm going to talk to you about our district goals and priorities. And um as you know, this year has been um different from other years, we typically have a process. That we go through that has a lot of engagement, some of that engagement has existed as we know it. Um as far as getting input from our um educators and from being in classrooms and some will go back, we, there we go. From being in classrooms, et cetera, all these pieces are part of District Design twenty twenty two, it's very intentional, that's our strategic plan, it does not, we. You you heard us say, does not sit on a shelf, we actually, that is a living document that pushes us forward as we talk about extraordinary in our district, we want. You know, we want learning experiences to be meaningful, we want our teachers to always have. The best professional learning they can and opportunities to collaborate and grow with one another, and it really is what sets them apart and sets us apart in this district, so. It's exciting to think about District Design twenty twenty two, even in the midst of a pandemic. And tonight, I'll talk to you a little bit about the priorities for this year because as I was saying, we'll go to the next slide, as I was saying, this year has looked different. We've established these priorities that rise to the top, you can see here quite a few of them on this list, we have actions, priorities and and objectives for each of these. Tonight, we're gonna talk to you, going to talk to you more specifically about the first three on here. But it is important to think about the context of other priorities in our district, so you can see here reopening schools and keeping them open. In-person school, launch, creating cultures of thinking, essential elements of instruction, our world language program and professional learning, as well as environment. And throughout um the year, we have been and will continue to present um to the board and to our public. On these areas and how we're making progress, what the actions are that we have taken, will be taken, next steps and what we're thinking about. As I was saying, the whole process for this year has been different because typically, we're very used to bringing a lot of people together. So different focus groups, different kinds of conversations, bigger groups, smaller groups, we have artifacts, we have chances for a whole team to come together that has. A variety of stakeholders, um we would have done that toward the uh in the spring of last year, we will get back to that. But for our purposes for this year, it was very important for us to be clear and focused on what was most important. And it is because of that, that we've been able to actually make exceptional progress. In the areas that we have made with opening schools and actually having school continue in the most robust ways possible during um during a pandemic, so. Um this actual clarity of focus and clarity of what we're really um, what we're really prioritizing this year has been, has been important for us. To be able to to take those big steps forward and have our kids in school, so tonight, those first three areas are what we're going to give updates on. We will continue to come back about the other areas, I think it is important for us to know the context of all of the priorities, which is why I bring them all up here today. So next slide, we are talking tonight about reopening schools and keeping them open and as we think about that, um you know, we knew from the beginning and you can look here that. You know, uh that we've got, you know, definite um ideas down here about now that we're open, we cannot let up, we have to stay the course. Um we talked about maintaining um all safe reopening practices, staying vigilant, including our community so that we stay open, that was talked about by one of you earlier, I think it was President Halpern. And we are grateful for that and continue to involve our community and guarding against becoming complacent because we want to make sure that we stay open. And whether it be, you know, our children who are attending in person or virtually, we want to make sure all of our programs continue to operate at high levels. So in addition to that, we are very, very diligent about knowing that this is not forever, we're keeping our eye on the future. And when it is safe to transition into the next steps, we absolutely do so, so, you know, I think it's important for us to remember here as a district. That we knew from the beginning and never ever wavered from how important school is. You you know, we consider school and the uh the opportunity for our children to be in school indispensable. And quite honestly, I still am perplexed in our area, in our state, in our country. How it almost seemed for a while that it was like, well, the kids aren't in school and yes, we're concerned, but you know, the difference, we've gotta make sure that we stay behind that. And be courageous and do the right thing for children and the people in this district have absolutely done that and and really kept with. Our school buildings themselves have always been safe. And, and really kept with, our school buildings themselves have always been safe. When we closed last March, our school building didn't all of a sudden change and become safe. It's the behaviors of the people in our schools, in our communities, and that is what we focused on. How can we impact that and bring our children back to school? And that's been, what's been done so well here and has been a priority for us from the very beginning. So we know that, we know that we can't let up, and we also know that we all keep our foot in the present, as well as knowing that we need to be poised for the next step. So, um, so great work all around by the people in this district who have been very focused on what to do with the here and now, asking the right questions, making sure that we did not give up on how we can get our children the best education possible, whether it be in school, in person, in a school building, or virtually. So we're going to move on now and talk more specifically about our safe reopening.
Thank you, Dr. McClurg. Good evening. So like Dr. McClurg said, our priority has become safe reopening and now keeping our schools open. So how, we started this conversation in planning back in the spring of twenty twenty. And we began with the question, what will it take to reopen? And our conversation was never around if we reopen, it was how. How can we reopen? What do we need to do to be able to bring our students back to school? So we began that planning process as early as April. And we began working and developing our safe reopening plan to address all aspects of reopening and operations. And we really did address all aspects. We, we consulted with physicians, we gathered input and feedback from family members, from staff. Um, we considered different options. We considered AMPM programs and hybrid programs. And we really didn't feel that that met the standard that we wanted to bring our students back for one hundred percent instruction. And so we kept looking at how can we do that? How might we make that happen? And we were able to do it. We were able to open for in-person instruction five days a week for our students and also offer a full-time distance learning option. And we did that as early as September eighth. And the success was due to the hard work and commitment of our staff, our administrators, our students, our families, and also, as was mentioned earlier, our, the members of the board of trustees. And again, this has been, um, not a, not an easy process and not the easy road to travel, but the one that we knew was right for our students. And it was a, a collective effort. And again, because of the board also, um, being steadfast in the support of that goal. And we never wavered. Like Dr. McClurg said, we never wavered from that goal. We knew that's what we wanted. We focused on it and we figured out a way to make it happen. Next slide. So then, after, of course, after reopening, um, the focus shift, shifted to, as, as Holly mentioned, staying vigilant. How do we continue doing what we've been doing? How do we, how do we fight the, the COVID fatigue? How do we continue to keep our schools open when there is a surge of cases in the county? And I'm sure you've heard in, um, in the media and the news that other districts who have opened even partially or part-time or hybrids have been forced to close schools. And some districts have even closed because of, um, their number of cases or not being able to maintain that, that, um, reopening and their plan for reopening. And while we have had some positive cases in our district, we have had no outbreaks, we've had no school transmissions, and we've not had to close any of our schools. And so that has been, again, based on that commitment of vigilance and hard work. And we're being asked by other districts, we're, we're being contacted by families and even staff from other districts saying, how are you doing this? Why are you able, how, how were you able to open in September and you haven't had to close one single school? And you're open full-time. And again, one of the only districts opened one hundred, for one hundred percent instruction for our students, and we haven't had to close one school. And how have we done that? It's by continuing to implement our safe reopening plan. And that sounds really easy, but it has not been. And it's one hundred percent based on the hard work and commitment and dedication of everyone involved. And, um, I think it was President Halpern who mentioned that this is a commitment of our families as well. We've had to commit our students and our staff coming in every single day with that goal in mind that we're going to keep our schools open. And we're dedicated to following that reopening plan. And also our families being dedicated and, and maintaining what needs to happen outside of school and making that commitment outside of the school day. Uh, we have continued to follow the established health protocols for isolation and quarantine. And we're communicating with staff and families about cases and exposures. Um, for the parents on, on the board, you may have received some emails. We're, um, communicating consistently if there's been a positive case or if there's been anyone on the school campus who was exposed to a positive case. And then we're also keeping our community updated by our, uh, dashboard that is on our Del Mar School District. And our teachers are prepared for transitioning to and from remote learning. So when we've had a case, we have put our plan in place and our teachers, based on their hard work and preparation for that moment, have been able to transition students to a remote learning platform and then back into the classroom after the required quarantine. And then also, we have provided education to our community through our parent speaker series. So again, keeping our community and our families, um, updated and abreast of, of what needs to be happening while we're in school, but also what needs to be happening outside of school in order to con- continue to facilitate our opening, our reopening plan and keeping our schools open. Next slide, please. So we started with our parent speaker series this year. Our parent speaker series always focuses on student wellness. Um, of course, student wellness takes on a different meaning during a pandemic. So back in November, we had Dr. Ritter from UCSD talking to our community about managing COVID fatigue and the risk of transmission. And it was in this webinar, webinar that Dr. Ritter really talked about, um, strategies that families could put into place and the importance of that behavior outside of the school to support our healthy operations and, and maintaining our ability to keep our schools open. And again, when we're talking about wellness, we're not just talking about physical health and safety. We're also looking at social, emotional well-being and of course, mental health, which again, we all know, um, has been impacted and can be impacted during the, um, a pandemic or any kind of uncertainty, period of uncertainty. So we had this past Monday, Dr. Lauren Gist from Ready Children's Hospital, and she spoke to parents about, um, managing anxiety and depression for children during uncertain times. And both of those, um, webinars are available on our website for anybody who was not able to attend the live webinar. And our, uh, our series moves forward in March. We will be screening a movie, Angst. It's an independent original documentary on adolescent anxiety. And then again, as, um, our students, all of our students are spending more time online, we're always concerned with online safety. But this year, it, um, has become a much bigger concern as our students are spending even more time online. So in April, we will be visited by the San Diego County District Attorney, who will be presenting a webinar on keeping students safe online. Next slide, please. And this is our parent speaker series, Save the Date postcard, that recently was sent home with all of our families, so that our families could stay updated on our speaker series and, um, save these dates so that they would be available to attend our, um, recent webinar and our movie in March, and then our webinar with our district attorney in April. And again, like I said, we're always, our top priority is always well-being of students and student health and safety. And so this year, that priority has taken on a whole new meaning. But we are working, working and very diligently to achieve that goal of opening schools safely and keeping our schools open. And so next will be Shelley talking to us about the Launch Program. Next slide, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. So, um, as Dr. McClurg shared, that list of priority actions, our Launch Program is one of our priority actions this year. And, um, just continuing to ensure we provide the highest quality instruction in a distance learning format that will ensure our students are successful, um, over the course of this year. And to that end, we, um, created an advisory committee, which we've already had, um, a meeting facilitated by Jessica, Sarah, and myself, and which was very productive. And we've also really worked to make sure that our Launch teachers have appropriate professional learning uh, that meets their needs, which in this virtual setting are different in many cases than, um, the needs of our in-person teachers. So we, we continue with that work and we are very fortunate to have worked with some, to continue to work with, um, not only our, our program, um, developers, but also we're, we're continuing our work with Ron Richart. And all of that professional learning is being provided in a virtual format as well. And our Launch teachers are participating in all of those sessions. Um, next slide, please. So where are we with Launch? It continues to be a high-quality program. Our Launch teachers are doing an incredible, incredible job. And they continue to get better and better and better as they discover new resources and, and find new tools to help, uh, facilitate learning and engage students. We're serving, uh, thousand two hundred and sixty-six students as of today and over a thousand families. And that is a decrease in enrollment from where we started on August twenty-fourth. That starting number was one thousand three hundred and thirty-two. Uh, and those families that have moved out have moved to our in-person classrooms in our district. And we are, um, approaching capacity at some grade levels for our in-person learning. Um, with Launch, Launch was developed as a district learning program and based on research around a distance learning format. And it was never intended to replicate our in-person learning, except in quality. And so, um, what we really have to pay attention to is that it might look different than our in-person program by nature of it being a virtual experience. But it is, um, second to none in quality when we look at distance learning programs occurring around the county. Uh, our teachers, as I mentioned in the first bullet, our teachers are working incredibly hard. And most Launch teachers I talked to say that, that they, they have never worked so hard in preparing materials and finding resources and that their, their school day is, uh, their school slash workday is, is very lengthy to ensure that they continue with that high quality. And they are focused on the educational priorities. Something that is, is, can be a struggle sometimes is that, um, meeting those educational priorities in that distance learning format and that trying to fight for that balance for, um, some demands, that it also has a connection to the school site. And when a teacher, a Launch teacher has three, uh, students from three or even four schools in our district, um, that can become very complex. And, um, the desire to remain connected to a school site with students scattered throughout the district and different programs going on at different schools, um, often can fall on our Launch teachers' shoulders to try to navigate that and, um, figure out how to come to common ground. So that just continues to be something, um, we navigate and our teachers are really working hard to navigate. And then important to remember that Launch exists to meet the needs of families, um, during a pandemic. And, um, we, uh, we wouldn't have developed as robust a distance learning program as we needed to, uh, because of that, the importance and quality. And, um, and it is here because we are in the middle of a pandemic. We have learned some incredible lessons and some information that we certainly will incorporate to our, our learning program. So it's, uh, it's been a, a huge learning curve and I'm so pleased we've been able to serve so many families in our district with an outstanding educational option. And then the last bullet is, Launch is a very costly program and it is very costly in terms of time allocation and financial resources. So when we think about Launch, essentially, it operates as our largest school in the district. And it really is operating as almost a ninth school. And with that, it, it requires an incredible time allocation among not only our site administrators, but our district-level administrators as well. And then along with that, it is, there are, um, you know, very high costs associated with staffing that program, um, as well as ensuring we have adequate supplies for all of our students. And, and when I say supplies, it seems like, um, you know, one might hear that and think, well, well, that, you know, students need supplies anyway. But when we're in a classroom setting, I'm gonna use a roll of Scotch tape, for example, or a roll of masking tape, or a science experiment. Um, that roll of masking tape would have been for the entire class. And when we're, when we're getting supplies for our students or watercolors, students would share watercolors. Um, or they would be used across multiple grade levels. But when we're allocating financial resources to provide supplies, we're doing it on an individual student basis. And so when you're looking at, you know, twelve hundred plus students, that those really, those, those costs really escalate quite quickly in ensuring that not only our teachers have what they need, but our students have what they need to, um, participate fully in the educational program. With that, I'll go ahead and turn that over to Holly. Next slide, please.
So we do have these two amazing options in our district. Shelley just talked about Launch and it really is our, I mean, I don't know of another program that is as robust for distance learning as ours is, which is great. We have over a thousand children, twelve hundred children, um, in the program and we want it to be so. We're committed to quality. And, you know, how have we done this? Because a year ago, these program, you know, we didn't have Launch and we didn't have in-person as it is right now and all of this. And, and really, I've talked about this before and i- it's important to, you know, consciously remind ourselves that because we have such a strong commitment to our vision and mission with District Design twenty twenty-two, it is this culture of innovation and change that we have and commitment to meaningful learning and doing what kids need that allows us all in this district to respond to something like a pandemic. And so, you know, when we think about COVID and all the things going on and some people have hybrid, et cetera, we look in our district, even, you know, in addition to COVID, in the midst of everything going on, our children are experiencing such extraordinary learning opportunities, it's such a testament to everything that's being done everywhere, every school, every classroom, every teacher, all of our support staff. And we also know that there's going to be an existence beyond COVID. So, and we don't live in the world with just planning in our district. It's our strength that we are continuously thinking about where we are now and planning for next steps and putting things in motion. Just like design thinking, we try things out. It's iterative. We get it going and we use what works and make sure we get those things in place for children as quickly as possible, because children today need great practice, not children five or ten years from now. So it's just a testament to, to the, the great thinking in our district, um, across the board. And, um, and we are excited for a time that is post-COVID and looking forward to that and being able to get back to, you know, some of our, uh, from, some of our ways of, of, you know, traditionally reaching out to our, to our community and continuing to get in-person feedback from all of them. We do miss that part of it. We are living, um, as we are supposed to, um, from a distance, uh, with all of our, you know, stakeholders for the most part. So we miss that part and can't wait to be able to embrace that again. So that is our update as of right now. Our programs are excellent. I hear great feedback across the board from parents everywhere. And it's nice to hear lots of appreciation for the teachers and support staff and principals and administrators. I'm hearing a lot of that as well. So it's great. And thank you again to our board for all of your support and vision. I'm hearing a lot of that as well. So it's great and thank you again to our board for all of your support and vision.
Thank you. I don't think there's like enough appreciation we can express for, for everything that you're doing. Um it's a pretty impressive undertaking, as we have said quite a number of times. Um I, one small thing to just um call and thank you for um that we haven't talked a lot about, but in the parent series, I know you have um Summer of Stephens coming to talk about uh online safety and, you know, I don't think a lot of people know that even in the San Diego High School District, some of those schools that there has been trafficking of um teenagers. And it's, it's coming hard, it's kind of hard to wrap your head around, um but our kids are being targeted. Um so I, I don't know a lot about it, but I know that it's more present than you might originally expect in, in our community. So um, you know, there's just a couple of different examples that I know of, but I'm, I'm looking forward to that session and I appreciate you um bringing this even at the elementary level so that we're all, you know, parents are preparing themselves or their kids um as time goes on and they have, kids have more autonomy. Do others have questions or comments? Sorry.
I just wanted to also say thank you for you guys for all the hard work you've put in to making Launch and in-person work this year and um I do also appreciate as a parent, the little um postcard that was sent out. That was very nice. Thank you. Whoever designed it did a good job. My mom was a graphic designer, so I sometimes appreciate those things.
It's been crazy. Thanks for all the work that you guys did. Appreciate all the work and hard work that you put into it. I know it's, it's uh, it's been, it's been wild and you guys did a good job.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Um we are gonna go to the um last item of the evening just about before we get to closing items, which is the Board Report Facilities Update um with Chris Delante.
Yes, good evening. Excuse me. Uh Governing Board, President Halpern, members of the board and Dr. McClurg and our members of the community, thank you. Uh tonight, I'll do my monthly facilities updates. Uh and John, we can go to the next slide. So the topics we'll cover tonight will be our Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine, the Delmar Heights School Rebuild, and we'll talk a bit on the Delmar Hills Academy Modernization. So with Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine, uh you can go to the next slide, John. Uh Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine, just an update. We are again, are in our coastal development permit review. Uh our first cycle review was completed. As we showed at the last board meeting, there were uh some delay in completion and we were five weeks late in one of our uh our reviewers, which led to us being a little bit slower in moving forward to the second review cycle. All of our reviews for this cycle are due uh either the eighth or the eleventh, so beginning to the end of last week. Uh we do still have four reviews that are incomplete. However, we are making progress in checking off reviews. The one piece I will um say we appreciate with the city is when they've had reviewers who are um moving slowly, we have had the chance to resubmit a piece and hopefully check something off before going into another cycle review. So we're trying to take advantage of that as a couple of people are, are uh moving a little slowly. We're hopeful that we can either check off a few more boxes or get the third cycle review submitted before the holiday. And uh we still uh look like we're still in good shape to be able to uh finalize that uh pretty early in the new year so we can start construction uh in, in winter-spring twenty-twenty-one, soon into the new year. And we still project the ability to complete that in time for the August twenty-twenty-two school opening. Again, this is the last item to be able to break ground for Increment One, so uh we, we are um hopeful again that we can get that through uh fairly soon after the new year. Next, and so for the Delmar Heights School Rebuild, John, you can go to the next slide. Uh three areas for the Delmar Heights School Rebuild to touch on. Uh first of all, litigation. Uh litigation hearing, uh we have had it continued twice. So originally it was November eighteenth and then December third. It is scheduled for December twenty-second and um by all appearances, it looks like it will go forward on the twenty-second. So we'll talk a little bit about that. I'll give you a little bit of an update on the resubmitment. It's in process for the coastal development permit. And then at the last board meeting, I shared that uh we know Increment One was approved by DSA on June twenty-third. Our last board meeting was November eighteenth and we had finished the DSA process, but we hadn't received the stamped set of DSA-approved documents. It was approved and uh stamped November seventeenth, so we have approved documents for both Increment One and Increment Two, which is fantastic because as we move forward and are able to break ground, we have the full uh DSA-approved sets to be able to build from. So next slide. With uh litigation, uh again, as I shared, we anticipate being in a hearing on December twenty-second. Uh again, under normal circumstances, the public would be allowed to attend, to be in the courtroom. Currently, it is scheduled for in-person court hearing. However, uh we will be having to submit um district staff who may attend because it is very restricted due to COVID-nineteen. We have been informed as well uh that there is an option for virtual attendance from the public through a call-in. This is through the Superior Court, so uh the district is not able to control or coordinate it. However, we have posted the call-in number and the code on the Sequel litigation page under our um Delmar Heights project. So anybody in the public who is interested um would be able to hear. Uh you won't be able to see, but you'll be able to hear the hearing. Uh a- as we shared last uh month as well, uh the board, our staff, the public will not be able to testify or offer written input or really participate in any way in this hearing. So it is uh a, a time at which our attorneys and the attorneys uh from the other side will be presenting the information. Uh and we are um confident in the hard work that our attorneys will be putting in and uh we will have some representation from the district at that meeting. And then finally, just to review, that we, we do not believe a determination will be issued on the date of the hearing. It's expected to be two to four weeks with the holidays. That looks like sometime in January. Um middle to end of January would be expected, but as we hear more, we will uh share it with the, the board and the public um as soon as we hear uh should a determination or decision be, be made. With uh the coastal development permits update and the delay that we have uh undertaken, we've talked before about the fact that the lawsuit and the letters sent to the city uh did follow uh lead to an increased level of review and subsequent delay. We've been over that um in, in great detail in previous reports. But to update the board, we are in the midst of a um, a, end of a review cycle. And there's some environmental items that they're reviewing. We're very confident with that piece. Uh we have uh a, a review that has a couple of items that they asked for some more detail on, um some new pieces that they brought up, but are, are all very uh very much items that we believe we can check off. And so we're hopeful that we'll be able to submit uh what we believe would be the final review before the holidays. And that would lead us to a hearing for the permit in early twenty-twenty-one. That would likely lead to an end of a cycle in uh January, and then they'd go through the set, the process of setting a, a hearing for us. So uh we feel uh very confident that we are very close to the end of this process. Um our architects and uh placeworks and our attorneys, we've all worked together um to really uh rattle off items and, and tick it down um in some areas where they have listed up to seventy items that they have come up with through some of the review process, but um we are seeing that light at the end of the tunnel. And so we're excited to move through that and be able to um take a next step. Uh next slide, please, John. And so then uh I would like to just update you on the Delmar Hills Academy Modernization. Uh I brought this up at last uh month's board meeting and uh really what I'm updating on this, these timelines are very similar. However, with the community engagement, uh we are, we did need to push it just a little bit more with the time uh taken to prepare for uh the hearing, the coastal development permit with both projects. Um we will be moving to um early twenty-twenty-one to the district planning that we will need to do. The first step in this um with the modernization is some district team planning and then bringing that information and working with the architects to come to the community and engage the community in uh helping us make decisions and work forward with the plan. And so we would see that happening in spring of twenty-twenty-one. And my goal would be that we could uh hopefully get this worked through over the spring and by the end of the uh school year. I still, I, I've worked with our architects and having some conversation. I still do believe that with that in mind, we could start uh construction in June of twenty-twenty-two so we could have um our first summer of work being the summer of twenty-twenty-two. At this point, summer work over the summer of twenty-one would be quite rushed to get to. So um we're, we're able to keep in that uh space while still having the time to do the planning right way. And so with that, I think that was my last slide. Um I'd be happy to answer any questions uh the board may have.
Chris, just regarding the Delmar Hills um construction, so if there's summer sprints, students can remain on campus throughout the academic year and they won't be affected?
That, that's correct. And so we'd be looking at summer sprints and if there was a need for anything, then that's where we discuss with the architect is there if for some reason there were a need, how do we do it in a manner that doesn't impact and allows the students um the reign of the most of the campus? However, we believe that we'd be able to do uh our goal would be to do the bulk of all the work over the two summers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? I know we've covered these topics extensively. Okay. Um all right, we will, I look forward to the hearing on the twenty-second. Um and thank you, Chris. We will move on to item twelve point one, uh Board Review of Reminder of Upcoming DNUSD Events. And those are listed. Twelve point two is Board Review Reminder of Upcoming DMSCF and PTA Events. Looks like we're not really getting these real time, but I know that a lot of times they get scheduled last minute, perhaps no one's really planned for January at this point. Um uh thank you. But um and item twelve point three, preliminary items for the January regular board meeting. Are there any items for the meeting, um the January meeting? Okay, then that brings us to twelve point four, adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm going to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Member Raftor?
Aye.
Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And aye for me. Uh the meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-eight PM. Happy holidays, everybody. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.